Okay. The hour having arrived, I'm going to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Hold to Order. And now, I have to excuse myself, and I'll explain why. There's a meeting of the Urbana IDOT Traffic Stop Study Task Force in the executive conference room upstairs, and that meeting can't go forward without me because without me, there won't be a quorum. And we're just at the end stage of finalizing our report to the council. So I'm going to ask Mr. Smythe to chair the meeting in my stead.
You'll go back when you're done.
And I will return when that meeting ends.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson is leaving. Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda? I know we have a couple of items. Diane?
We have a pollinator in the audience who wishes to speak.
Right. Okay. We'll get that one up first here. So Molly Twaini.
Thank you for allowing pollinators, by the way. So, members of the esteemed Urbana City Council and Honorable Mayor Pressing, I am here on a mission. The Champaign-Urbana Adult Team Spelling Bee is coming up in less than two weeks, and we have yet to see a team from the city of Urbana represented. So I'm here to challenge you. Honorable Mayor Pressing made a wonderful promotional video for us. She was challenged by a group of students at Wiley Elementary to spell the word "infrastructure", which she did successfully. So we know that people in Urbana can spell. So the event is November 7th. We're hoping that you'll put together a three-person team, and Diane actually has details and will be following up with all of you. And I'm hoping I don't have to come back and sting anyone. That is all.
What night is it again?
It's Saturday, November 7th. It starts at 6:00 PM, and it's at City View at the terminal. And Urbana did have a team last year representing them. Any questions?
I'm sure Diane will come up with, will rub a couple of us into it.
Okay. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You can buzz off now.
I can.
Next up is a presentation on Bike Ambassador. Steve, you're up, I guess. Steve Clark from League of American Bicyclists is here to present a little bit of information on our bike-friendly program and present us an award, I guess.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I am very honored to be here tonight, and the occasion is to present to you a Bicycle Friendly Community Award. And I'll give you a little bit of background about the program. I'm with the League of American Bicyclists. I'm the Bicycle Friendly Community Specialist, and I travel around the country helping cities to become more bicycle-friendly. So I've had the good fortune of being here the last few days, riding around your streets and meeting people, really enjoying the diverse bicycle culture that has sprung up here. I think it's probably been over 30 years in the making. It's just some wonderful people that are doing wonderful things in your community. And what we have something called the Bicycle Friendly America Program, and a component of that is bicycle-friendly communities. And every year, cities will apply to be designated as a bicycle-friendly community. And we've had over 800 applications since we started this back in around 2000. 350 cities have become designated as bicycle-friendly. And I'm happy to say that your application last fall resulted not only in a bicycle-friendly community designation, you were at bronze from a previous application, but you jumped ahead from bronze to gold. You are the first city in Illinois to actually receive a gold award. So I want to really congratulate you. And I also should warn you that with this comes immense responsibility because your friends in Chicago, in Champaign, there are 12 other bicycle-friendly communities in Illinois, and they're going to be traveling here now to find out what you're doing that they're not doing that landed you the gold award. And truly, the gold communities should be viewed as pioneering communities. There is another level above gold that four cities have achieved, and that's platinum. Portland, Oregon, Boulder, Colorado, Fort Collins, and Davis, California are all at the platinum level. There's actually another level that nobody's achieved yet, and that's diamond. And I was telling the group earlier today that what this means is that you could actually be the first diamond community. You could skip over the platinum altogether like you did the gold, and I want that to be a great aspiration. Anyway, thanks for doing all that you're doing. We're looking for a comprehensive approach in what we call the five Es. So it's not just about infrastructure, which is a hard word to spell, but it's, yes, so infrastructure is the engineering aspect. We're looking for good education programs, solid encouragement programs, strong enforcement programs, and then evaluation and planning. And you have a good comprehensive approach. You're doing some good work in all those areas. So keep up the good work. You've got great staff, great advocates, a strong community, and obviously, good support at the policymakers' level, which makes all the difference in the world. So, again, thank you.
Steve, hold on a second. We have some questions for you. Mayor Pressing.
Well, infrastructure's not that hard to spell, but it's pretty hard to finance, I will tell you that. And we owe a great debt of gratitude to Charlie Smythe, who's currently on the city council, and Brandon Bowersox-Johnson, who is still the Chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So they deserve a lot of credit for this.
It was Brendan's idea, so if anybody wants to lay blame, the credit can come my way, but Brendan will take the blame back there, right? Right, Brendan? Yeah. Anyway, yeah, Brendan, it was a wonderful idea in 2005 that Brendan brought to the council, and that got us here. The question I have for Steve is how long did it take you to learn what the five Es stood for?
For me personally?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, you know, I actually was the first bicycle coordinator in Boulder, Colorado, back in 1983. I shouldn't tell people that. So we had, we talked about the five Es back in Boulder. So, yeah, it's been part of my language for a long time. But there's actually a sixth E that I should mention, and that's equity. And it's all about making sure that our investments are truly being placed in all the neighborhoods, and that people who need to use the bicycle the most are able to do that. And so, again, good work for, you know, your projects with the Bike Center and other things that you're doing there, too. And this is really, it's not about bicycling. It's more about quality of life issues, and it's how do you make the bicycle work for the city of Urbana, not so much what can you do for bicyclists? Because it's, what people are realizing now that this, you know, a bikeable city, a walkable city, is a city where people want to work, where they want to live, and where they will come to play. And people look on our website all the time to figure out where they want to go on to their next vacation. So, again, congratulations. People will be coming here and seeing what you have. So keep improving.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add, of those five Es, I think the city can take care of, or at least assist mostly with engineering, enforcement, and evaluation, but without the education and encouragement, we wouldn't have gotten there. So for Champaign County Bikes and Safe Routes to School and the school system that have been working so closely with you all, I think we really owe the gold to you as much as any city effort has been. So thanks a lot.
Excellent point. And speaking of infrastructure and improvements, one of the issues that council was looking at a number of months ago was University Avenue, and we finally have an IDOT presentation on the University Avenue Road Assessment, Safety Assessment, and Proposed Improvements. Bill Gray, Public Works.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to introduce the IDOT representatives who will be making this presentation. It'll be in two parts, and I did provide handouts at the dais for all of you. The first part, one, the road safety assessment itself, will be presented by Priscilla Tobias. Priscilla will come up here in just a second, and she is the safety, statewide now, state safety engineer. And just a little background and history, at one time, Priscilla worked in the engineering division, or engineering department, a few years ago. So she has some Urbana roots here. And then, part two of the presentation will be by Jason Stoltz. Jason's a project engineer, and he'll be getting more into the details of what are the recommendations and what those are going to look like. So, and then Craig Unperton. Craig is the District Five Programming Engineer, and he's here, too, to augment or assist in any way possible. And I'll ask the three, Priscilla, Jason, and Craig, to come forward and proceed with your presentation. And again, as background, this is a study that was done actually a year ago or so, and it was an intensive three, four-day effort. And Priscilla will get into some of those details, but now we have the report details, and we'll go from there. So, Priscilla.
Hi. Thank you for having us here tonight. As you said, the road safety assessment, that actually was kind of a combined, I'll say, request, the district recognizing that, you know, the safety issues out there, and then also between COATs and the city of Urbana, and Bill Gray asking. So based on that, we pulled a team together to do the road safety assessment. And just to touch base, so when we do the road safety assessments, all of the information in there is typically confidential and cannot be used in a court of law and whatever. So with that information, like I said, we don't typically publish that. The whole concept behind looking at a road safety assessment is you're looking at the safety performance of a roadway, and not necessarily does it meet a design criteria. And so you're looking at risk, and it's a matter of is something less safe or more safe, and not that it, it's not just black and white, is the road safe or is it not, but how can you enhance the safety through that? And so we look at, when going out there, look at that risk and the safety performance of the road. And just real quick to go through that process, so we'll have a kickoff meeting, we've already gathered, like, crash data and other information. We'll start looking at problem identification, do the risk analysis, and then through that, after looking at the data, doing the field review, we'll look at countermeasures, and then prepare the summary presentation that we present to the district, and then the report. And so that's kind of where we're at, we've provided the report to the district. And just real quick, too, on the risk category, so when they're looking at the road safety assessment, they're looking at frequency, as far as the crash frequency, and then across the board, then they're looking at the severity. And so something can be very severe and frequent, and then it gets an F, kind of like in school, it's not a good thing. And then if it's rare and severe, then you're kind of over in the C category. But if you're low severity and it's, you know, frequent, then you're in the C category as well. So with the road safety assessment, what we did was we looked at University Avenue from Lincoln Avenue to Cunningham Avenue, so almost 1.39 mile segment. It does have 16 intersection, nine of which are signalized and seven which are not. When we looked at the crashes, what really stood out was angle crashes, turning crashes, which are both intersection-related, and then pedestrian, then the rear-end crashes also, which are intersection-related, and then pedestrian. And turning crashes, as an example, was 35% of the fatal A injury and B injury. And just as a real quick, kind of side thing, an A injury would be incapacitating or a severe injury, and then the B would be a non-incapacitating. And so we do look at both of those when we're evaluating crashes. So we're looking more on the severe crashes and less on the property damage only, and that's in line with federal regulations and a national kind of approach to safety. When we looked at the crashes and then how they are represented in relation to our statewide averages, which helps us then go, is that performing similar to its peers, or is it performing worse or better? So the darker blue line is the road safety assessment, so looking at this corridor, and the lighter blue line is looking at the statewide. So you can see that turning-type crashes are well overrepresented on this corridor, as is pedicyclists, pedestrians. The angle crashes, while they're not overrepresented, still represent a significant number of crashes, and again, those are tied to the intersection-related type crashes. And then when we look across the board at the intersections, University at Lincoln has a significant number of A injury crashes, University at Bucy, we also looked at, Kohler, and then you come down into Orchard and McCullough, those both have fatal crashes. And then University at Cunningham and also at Broadway also have severe injury-type crashes. And when we look at the performance and how is it, how are these intersections performing compared to a statewide comparison, then University at Lincoln, University at McCullough, and University at Cunningham Avenue, we would say are performing worse than similar-type roadways or intersections. So those would be three, the intersections in particular, we would definitely want to make sure that we're focusing on with safety performance. And then Bucy, also, as far as a stop-controlled intersection, is performing kind of worse than similar-type intersections. The way we approached the road safety assessment was, we did look at the intersections, but we looked at the entire, I'll say, stretch as a corridor. And so when we did that, it's like you wouldn't necessarily just go to one intersection or one location and prove it, but you would look at the entire corridor and apply these type of treatments. And so we did look at, like, signalized intersections, we looked at pedestrian accommodations, bicycle accommodations, access management, and lighting. And in particular, because of the crashes, that's where these type of issues kind of came to the surface. And then we did look at the intersections specifically that were overrepresented. So as far as, like, signalized intersections, the risk rating there was a D. And again, that's because of frequency of crashes and the severity of crashes. And the type of crashes typically were turning, angle, and rear-end. And 80% of the turning fatal A injury and B injury crashes were actually at University Avenue with Cunningham and also Lincoln Avenue. And some of the observations we saw was the left turn phasing was an issue, visibility of the signals, trees really is impacting the visibility of your signals, and also the lighting, the, I'll say, the effectiveness of the street lighting that's out there. So those, I'll say, the trees, tree trimming placement is going to need to be looked at. And then the large footprints at the Lincoln and Cunningham Avenue intersections, it's just a lot to get across, and there's a lot going on at those intersections as well. As far as pedestrian accommodations, that was an E. And again, it's because of the frequency and the severity, and that's where, again, you had the overrepresentation for the pedestrian-related fatal crashes there. And in particular, McCullough was an area that was a focus, and there's a lot of mid-block crossing that is occurring here on this corridor. The sidewalk conditions vary throughout the corridor, and there are no mid-block crossings, so that's kind of a free-for-all, I'll say, you know, between the intersections. And there are missing pedestrian features throughout the corridor, like crosswalks, and also inconsistent pedestrian signal heads and timing phases. The one thing that I think the city has done a good job on, and we would continue to support this, would be the encourage education, I'd say, to the public, but also to the hospital staff and the business staff about pedestrian safety and visibility. Okay, and bicycle accommodation, that got a risk rating of D. And again, you have a lot of bicyclists out there, and they're going in different directions, both different, you know, both directions, but they're also on the sidewalks. There aren't any bike lanes out there, and the five-year crash percentages for bicycle-related crashes are actually higher than our statewide average for similar-type of corridors. So it's definitely an issue there. And then, like, here, you can see, here's a bicyclist that is just kind of, like, out there, crossing against, I guess you'd say, against traffic. And one of the things that I am really big on is that, you know, bicyclists, they follow those same rules of the road that motorists do as far as stopping at the lights, they're going with the flow of traffic, and so that they're doing their own safe behavior, and so, or at least looking at, you know, do you provide alternate paths for them? Access management was an issue. Now, the risk rating was a B, so there's not as many crashes related to that, but there were 40 entrances per mile in this stretch. That's a lot of entrances for a corridor like such, and several of them are not being used, they're inoperative. And so this would be a great opportunity to go through that corridor and say, okay, you know, can we cut down the number of entrances that we have through here? And several are near the intersections, which actually create multiple conflict points. We see that even in Springfield, where it's like entrances are close up the intersection, so at the same time you're trying to get traffic through there, you have people coming in and out of the entrances. Payment marking, it's a risk rating of B, but I firmly believe that signing and payment marking are huge for driver expectation, so that they give visual cues to motorists as far as what they should be looking for, like pedestrians with crosswalks, and the payment marking, as far as these are lanes you're supposed to be in, and where should I be stopping? And so, you know, what we noted was there was, you know, a lot of worn or missing payment markings, which included lane lines, stop bars, and crosswalks. And as I said, those give visual cues, especially at night, and then poor weather, like rain, fog type of thing. Distracted driving was a risk rating of C through here. There were several motorists that were noted talking on their handheld device, and I would say, you know, that, we see that issue across the state, it's not, you know, just here. But on a positive note, I think while the RSA team was out doing the road safety assessment, that the city police were doing enforcement of the cellphone law. So that's good. And so we would say, you know, continue to enforce the cellphone law and educate motorists on what they should and shouldn't be doing. And then, commercial signage or billboards, that was given a risk rating of A, and it would impact, I think, rear-end crashes, but maybe angle as well, depending, and it really can be, come a distraction to motorists. And so, you know, one of our things was to coordinate with the municipality to alter billboard advertising ordinances. I know that when I talk to state police, as an example, they'll tell you the static billboards are less distracting than the LED ones, just because it's a lot of information. So I think the timing of those and the placement become very critical when looking at those. And lighting, also, while nighttime crashes were not overrepresented, I think, especially with the volume or the sheer numbers of pedestrians and bicyclists that you have out there, the lighting is very critical to being able to see them and for motorists to, you know, not hit them. And so we did recommend enhancing the lighting, and I think, like I said, the trees come into play there, and then moving to LED lighting, which can be, has a wider spectrum for visibility and low lighting, but can also, as we move forward, be more cost-effective as industry moves away from the older type lighting into the LED. And so that's just a picture of that. And then just real quick with the intersection, so with Bucy, we were recommending that you improve the motor expectation of traffic control, in particular with stop bars and crosswalks, and we felt like that would help with the pedestrian issue and vehicles knowing to stop and yield to traffic before pulling out. Orchard was to improve traffic signal phasing and look at maybe exclusive pedestrian phase to provide some measure of pedestrian safety there. And McCullough in particular, sight distance stood out, and so I think the signing and the fencing through that area, and so it was like looking at that. Broadway, I think really we felt like it would get addressed through the corridor improvements. And then Cunningham and Vine, there, and it's really hard to, the vertical and the horizontal curve, so the sight distance, being able to look down the road, is what impacts part of the performance there. And so we really felt like the signal, like the protected left, that looking at the signal phasing may be a better option to address some of the geometric features that you can't address without reconstructing the intersection. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason.
Do you want to do questions at the end, or for each part?
My name is Jason Stoltz. I'll be giving the district presentation on what the district is looking for, a safety improvement for the University Avenue. Project's located in Urbana, Illinois. The district's limits are looking from Wright Street to Cunningham Avenue. We're also going to review the addition of improvements on Wright Street from University Avenue to White Street to tie into the upcoming multi-modal corridor enhancement project, MCOR. Project length's approximately 1.3 miles. It's a five-lane cross-section out there, 10-foot lanes. The sidewalk varies from four to five foot on average. There is a little bit of wider sidewalk in a few spot locations. Noncompliant ADA pedestrian ramps is located throughout the corridor. Like Priscilla said, there's nine signalized intersections and seven unsignalized intersections in this. The average daily traffic, or ADT, out there is 21,900. It has a level of service in the AM of C, and a level of service in the PM is D, which D is approaching unstable flow. Bicycle ADT is 80, with a level of service of E, which is for advanced cyclists. The road safety assessment corridor was listed as a pedestrian corridor with safety improvement potential by the Bureau of Safety Engineering, and the district is studying potential safety improvements.
Can you say what unstable flow is?
I think that's when the capacity starts breaking down.
Yes.
As far as congestion and that type of thing.
It's also a measure of delay at the intersection, and it's measured in how many seconds the average motorist may take to get through an intersection, because the volume is meeting or exceeding the capacity of the intersection, so it'll be more delay.
It has the same, sorry, Bill. It has the same rating, A, as Priscilla was using, A to E. The A is free flow, no traffic problems at all, and F comes basically to parking lot.
Okay.
And so D, you start encountering a lot of issues.
Okay. Thank you.
Potential improvements are providing an eight-foot sidewalk where possible on both sides of the corridor with a two-foot buffer from the back of curb. At locations where there's existing building restrictions or major right-of-way constraints, the sidewalk will be transitioned to a five-foot sidewalk on one side, keeping the eight-foot on the opposite side. Providing ADA-compliant pedestrian ramps throughout the corridor, improves accessibility for all users, and has the potential to reduce pedestrian-type crashes. Payment marking, providing the continental stripe, sidewalk striping, which is more visible to motorists, and also improves detection of people with low vision. Providing mainline and intersection pavement striping, and replacing the raised reflective pavement markers has reduced potential of rear-end angle, turning, pedestrian, and side-swipe type crashes. Bicycle accommodations, providing eight-foot sidewalks will result in fewer conflicts between the bicyclists and pedestrians, and then providing wayfinding to direct bicyclists to designated bike routes and shared-use paths that run parallel to this corridor. Has the potential to reduce pedestrian-type crashes. Traffic signal modernization upgrading to provide one signal head per lane. Most of our signals that we have are on the lane line and not on the lane itself. And then complete a progression analysis to coordinate all traffic signals. Reduces the potential for rear-end turning angle and pedestrian-type all traffic signals. Reduces the potential for rear-end turning angle and pedestrian-type crashes. Providing flashing yellow arrow, yeah, flashing yellow signal indication as a signal display for the left turn movements during permissive turn intervals. It's basically the flashing yellow. Has the potential to reduce the angle and turning type crashes. Installing the yellow reflective back plates improves, improves invisibility of the face of the signal heads. Potential to reduce unintentional red light running crashes. Providing signalized intersections with a non-visual format for roadway crossing and provides consistency throughout the corridor. So all the intersections would have this and reduces the potential for pedestrian-type crashes. Converting the corridor over to an LED system lighting to improve driver visibility at night. Lower maintenance and energy costs reduces fixed object and pedestrian-type crashes. Driveways, removing inoperable driveways throughout the corridor, as you can see in the picture on the right. And reestablished deteriorated curb to redefine driveway limits is a picture on the left has several hundred, several hundred foot of open frontage at that property. Then would coordinate with the property owners to reduce the number of these locations. Some other potential improvements would be trimming the trees at several locations that obstruct traffic signals and lighting. Replacing concrete curb and gutter that has had multiple pavement overlays and has reduced the effective curb height. And removing mature trees that are located in the two-foot buffer zone that pose a safety concern. So moving forward for the district, what we're looking at is to complete the study of these potential improvements and then coordinate with user groups and local agencies. Then we would submit the application to the Highway Safety Improvement Program for funding and then complete the project report, which is the Phase One and the plans for the project. And now we will take any questions.
Maybe before we get started, just to comment a little bit on the University Avenue corridor. The university corridor is not what I would call a bike route or bicycle facility per our bicycle master plan. So I just want you to understand and realize that. We're talking about a wider sidewalk to accommodate that bicyclist that may be getting to some specific destination. But, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not the intent to do an eight-foot wide sidewalk to establish a bike route east and west along University Avenue. So I just want to clarify that.
Okay, Dennis, then the mayor.
Yeah, there were maybe two things that I wanted to ask about. So you're indicating that one of the safety features that you would like to work on or have, have in, in position would be better marked crosswalks for the pedestrians. And you showed that there was going to be a preference for the parallel banded crosswalk as opposed to a delineated edge crosswalk. And are these going to be installed? Are you suggesting specific spots? Are you looking at places that, that are at signaled intersections or unsignaled intersections or mid-block? And the reason why I'm asking about this is because from my, my memory of what we discussed previously when crosswalk, marked crosswalks have come up on city streets in the Traffic Commission is that providing a marked crosswalk mid-block or at an unsignalized crossing is not really, is, was not a preferred tactic for saving people's lives because it creates an unwarranted sense of safety for the pedestrian. So are you saying now that maybe these things are actually approved and useful to be added to the streets?
Our focus is to do, our focus is to do the improved crosswalks at the signalized intersections. Think only at Bucie would be where, and it would be on the, the side road that, across the side road that, that the, where it would be at an unsignalized intersection. But it's, it is the focus of the signalized intersections. And I know that we did a safety improvement in our Springfield district. And when we do these upgraded pedestrian crosswalks with the enhanced signing, that they really do pop, you know, as you approach the intersection and versus as a motorist you get up to the intersection like, oh, here's a crosswalk. And so, so we're not recommending doing the mid-block crossings unless there's some sort of flashing beacon or something else that would indicate, you know, to go there. So no, we're not recommending that.
And then, university already is a wide street and all it has is a turning lane in the center. Are you suggesting, or why wouldn't you be suggesting having islands established in the street or medians mid-street for pedestrian safety as they try to cross the street? Because as you said before, there is a lot of, there are certain places where there's a lot of mid-block crossing. And with the, the completion of a larger student complex near the university there, and I can't remember the Goodman, at Goodwin and university, I can expect that we're going to see ever yet more mid-block crossings by students who are just, you know, trying to make the shortest route to campus. So how are you, how is this potential problem going to be addressed? You're not really suggesting any kind of lane modification apparently at this stage.
Yeah, not at this point. We're not looking at that at this point. We definitely wanted to have-
So is it the shoe before the, the foot or something or the-
Right, right.
Before the horse?
What we're looking at is just the study. We're just now getting into this. We just got the RSA completed about two, three months ago. So we haven't really studied it that, to the length that you're talking about. But what, on the Goodwin thing, what we'd probably try to do is to bring them to Goodwin to cross there. I mean, that's going to be an education on their part so they don't try to cross mid-block.
And we have this desire for education on, on Illinois Street south of the Lincoln Square Mall. And we also have it on Lincoln Street, North Lincoln Street, you know, near the apartment buildings there. And so far, no, no success.
No success, yeah.
So, so wishing for this to be solved educationally, I don't think is going to be very realistic. And I think you're going to have to challenge yourself with a little deeper thought about protection for mid-crossing by students.
Mayor?
I just wanted to ask about how you do the measurements, the traffic, the car traffic, vehicle traffic. Do you do it every block with those little things that are across the street along this corridor? Or do you have one for the whole corridor? Or how do you, how do you measure the traffic? And I, also I want to know how you measure the bicycles and the pedestrians because I would think that would vary tremendously. There'd be a lot more pedestrians right by car.
I do know on the, the bicycles and pedestrians, we had a six-hour, actually a 12-hour count, six hours in the morning, six hours in the afternoon, where we had actual people standing there counting people.
Yeah, I thought you might have to have people doing it because I didn't see how you measure.
For the ADT, I think they pick known places, usually either side of intersections. Like at Lincoln, they'll go on either side and put those little counters that you're seeing, the tape down. And so it's counted that way.
So did you say that visual was for 12 hours? Is that what you said?
I believe it was six, 12. I'm pretty sure it was 12 hours. Yeah, six in the morning to noon and then noon to six at night.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Madigan, then Diane.
So, first question is, so Bill Gray has pointed out that the eight-foot sidewalks are not meant to address bicycle activity. What is the, the reason for their recommendation then? An eight-foot sidewalk?
Well, I would say maybe to clarify is that they are, they're not intended to provide a bicycle path, or route. But they are, the thought was is by providing that multi, what we would call is an eight-foot multi-use pass. So it does allow pedestrians and bicyclists there. That, that does get them off the road, at least through that particular corridor. But, but if I understood correctly, it's not kind of then a designated bike route per se-
Okay, so not a designated bike route, but something that a bicyclist might be more comfortable using as opposed to a, a street?
Exactly. And it could be depending on your level of experience and, and comfort as a bicyclist. If maybe you're very, very comfortable being in that level, that traffic, then you can stay on the route. But otherwise you could be on this.
Oh, fair enough. I, I was just curious about that. So it's meant to be a shared use path between pedestrians and bicyclists?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to turn my attention now to commercial signage in your study, particularly addressing the Lincoln Avenue and University intersection. So there are currently eight sign faces that are static billboards. There's no LED, there's no, there's no digital signage at that, at that intersection. You stated in your testimony earlier that IDOT feels or thinks or knows that digital signage is somehow more dangerous than static signage. Or if I'm misstating, please clarify.
What I'm saying is that both us and state police believe that digital billboards can be a distraction. So I think you have to look at the timing, not saying that they're unsafe. So it's again, not black and white, but that you have to look at the signal ti- or the, not the signal timing, but the rotation of the, the messages. You have to look at placement. And, and that's not, like I said, I'm not the expert on our digital billboards. And our Bureau of Land Acquisition is in charge of outdoor advertising. But I, I do believe that when you look at the digital billboards, if you have them moving through, and like when I talk to state police, when you see the static signs, it's almost like, okay, yeah, they're there and you just keep moving. But, but the, depending on the, the, I'll say the frequency of the rotation of ads and the brightness of them, they can draw your eyes away from the road into them. So you have to look at sight distance, you know, are they, where are you putting them? How close to the road are they distracting, distracting you? Are they blocking any sight?
But, okay, so we have feelings here and we have anecdotal evidence, but do you have empirical evidence that that's the case?
We would need to pull the research specifically if you want, is it yes or no?
Yeah, I'm, I-
But I'm saying is, I do, I think there are factors that it's not a yes or no answer that depending on the rotation, the placement, the brightness, that those can either contribute to-
Okay, we've had, we've had extensive conversations about digital signage here in the committee. And no one has produced to this point, from anywhere in the world, any empirical evidence that LED signage is somehow more dangerous. And what I would, what, my position is that there are eight sign faces at this intersection. So what's more distracting? Someone trying to maybe try to view multiple of those sign faces panning from one way or the other? Or looking at, and you may not even be aware of this, but, but Adams Outdoor who owns all the sign faces here in town, they're willing to reduce to two faces at that intersection, two digital faces from eight.
Yeah, and that, and honestly, sir, that, from our, our perspective when we were doing the RSA, we were not looking at LED versus you got, we were just saying, you got billboards there. They, they can be a distraction. So that's just a general statement on that. And so I would agree that the number of signs can, I mean, you know, I mean, it, there's all, you know, even just regular street signs, you can overload motorists with signs, you know?
Right.
So I'm not disagreeing. I'm, again, just saying that you would need to look at those.
I would actually, I would, I would really appreciate consideration for that within the context of this because they, they do have a proposal that has, you know, been, been held up for months.
Well, and that, I would say that would be on the district looking at that. From the road safety assessment, we were looking at what's out there. We were not, you know, presented with a proposal for LED versus, so we're looking at how is the road performing with the way it is.
The only reason I asked you that was because you commented on-
Yeah, and it's-
-digital signage.
Yeah.
So, so we need to talk to somebody else about that is what you're suggesting?
What I'm suggesting is that the dis, you know, the district can, as far as, you know, because it's, I'll say that's their route, their responsibility, then you would coordinate with the district as far as what they would allow and, and that. Craig, I don't know if you want to-
Yeah, you could, you could call our operations engineer, Dave Spiker. I'll throw him under the bus. But yeah, that's something we'd look at. I mean, we do have a policy. I don't know what the policy is because I'm not in operations, but that's something he could relay the information to you.
You say what you would allow?
When, if you can, well, I used to be in operations about 15 years ago. And if you can see a sign from a state highway, we regulate it. That's the way I was always taught back then.
No, I understand that, yeah.
I don't know if that's still the rules now.
I actually have a business on a state highway, so I, I know all about that.
But anyway, that's something he could, he can get with you and talk to you about because it's, it's held under our operations bureau.
Right.
Not the land act in our district anyway.
Well, but those are standards that Adams Outdoor is aware of. I'm not trying to belabor this, but I'm just-
Absolutely, they are. And they usually play by the rules. I mean, we've dealt with them for years.
Right. Okay, well, we'll, we'll try to work through that. I appreciate it.
Okay, we've got Diane, then Bill, then Dennis.
Yes, I would just like to echo the comments made by Dennis Roberts regarding the, the future number of pedestrians, basically students who are going to be crossing University Avenue, not only from the new development at Goodwin Avenue, which is like 400 units, but there's an enormous apartment complex going down further west on University, just on the other side of Wright Street. And you're going to have hundreds and hundreds of distracted pedestrians crossing that street all day and all night. And I, I've been asking about this since the minute we approved our, our complex. And I haven't heard anybody discuss in detail how these, this particular safety challenge is going to be addressed. Because unless you literally funnel people down to the corners, you will have mid-block crossings. And, and these are students looking at their phones and crossing this incredibly busy state highway. So I just want to know what, what is the actual plan going to be? And maybe you're not the ones to answer it, but I think we as a city need to address it before we have fatalities because we will have injuries and accidents there. So that's my concern.
That's something we'll work with you guys on. I mean, we'll, we'll be looking at that issue, but we'll be working with Bill and his staff to, to see what we can do, what our, what our options are. And what Dennis recommended might be an option we may look at. This is just the study right now.
Okay, well, then, as long as we're defining parameters of our study, I want that included in the next phase. How about that?
And those are good comments. Anyone that has any comments can just give them to us at any time. I mean, this doesn't have to be at this meeting. Call us anytime, talk to Bill. He'll let us know any of the issues and we'll work together.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, thanks so far, thanks for all your work on this so far. In particular, I'm just interested in the McCullough intersection because you, you talked about that being a high pedestrian fatality area. And we also had a moving vehicle fatality there last year. And besides the continental-style crosswalk, I think you talked about the stripes. What other specific change, have you gotten to the specifics yet on that intersection, on, on what you'd recommend, one? And then maybe as part of that or separately, did you consider bus stops, where, locations of bus stops were, or how they interact with pedestrians and, and other vehicles? And then, I think there was another, another point? Well, that's it for now.
You can tell us the other point later, doesn't matter.
Yeah, I'll think of it.
I can tell you for both of those, we have not addressed those yet. We haven't looked at that, haven't studied it.
Another aspect of the, the interchanges on, intersections on university are, if I'm remembering correctly, at Lincoln, where pedestrians cross to an island before they cross the street itself because there are turn lanes that offer wider turning angles for right turns in different directions. So it's creating multiple, multiple lane hopping from, from the sidewalk to a triangular cut island, then across the street to another triangular cut island, if you recall those. I can't remember exactly where those are. I think it's on Lincoln. And, no, Broadway, I think it is.
Broadway, yeah.
The top of Broadway. Because I always walk up that way to get to the credit union sometimes. And I'm thinking, okay, that's intended supposedly to be a safe spot for pedestrians. And it, it seems very ineffective and there needs to be a, a- And it, it seems very ineffective, and there needs to be a, a more thoughtful design for those intersections, which, you know, maybe should be requiring bump outs or some other thing for pedestrians. For, the whole challenge of a pedestrian across this university is how many lanes you have to cross. And the worst location, of course, is that, Vorvine and Cunningham come together on University. It is, it is a pedestrian disaster. So-
Closely followed by Lincoln.
Yeah, Lincoln's not good. And then, then the second question is, Priscilla, when you were talking about your, your studies' concerns about the effect of digital billboards versus regular billboards, and maybe one was a little more distracting than the other, did you say that the state police also agreed with that?
When I, so, I'm not saying that there's a study, number one.
I didn't say that there was.
Okay, I just was making sure.
I think we're talking about impressions or-
Yeah, so when I, I had talked to state police, and in particular, because we had, we ourselves, as IDOT, had, had paid for a billboard to promote work zone safety, and, and our deputy secretary had, had questioned it. And so, I was asking state police their perspective on the digital, you know, versus the static. And, and they, and that's where I got, like I said, they were like, okay, this is what they, again, you could say anecdotal, feel like that they're, and again, I think you start looking at, you know, how, how close to the road is it? You know, what's, I mean, those other factors in there. And, and so, so it was, so I could say, here's what my, my impressions are. But then I was talking to state police again about that, to go, you know, were we off base and doing a static billboard? And, and so, that's, that's where that discussion came from.
And so, the state police also have a big concern, or an express concern about the digital billboards at intersections or along the street? I just thought I heard that, and I just wanted to-
No. Because I did not go to the level, and it was not specific to this project, but it was not at intersections or anything. It was just a general-
In general.
In general. And so, I think, again, you have to look at the site, and you have to look at the other, you know-
Aspects.
Aspects of it, yes. And that, you know, and that, I look at that, and I go, that goes with anything that we're doing from an engineering perspective. It's like, what is the impact of what we're doing? Does it enhance safety? Does it distract from it? And so, that's-
Okay, thanks very much.
Okay. Bill, Bill, want to wrap this up here?
No question.
Oh, okay, Aaron, I didn't know you, okay, let, let, Aaron Gooden here first? Yeah?
As long as you're not going to talk about billboards, then I'll, okay. Then I would let you, you go ahead.
Okay, no, I have a non-billboard related question. I remembered, as far as the speed limit goes, I know, because of the hospital area, because of the, the traffic and the pedestrians there, we had thought about maybe having a hospital's speed zone. Is that something that the state would have to do, since it's a state route? Or is that something the city can do, or is that something you would consider?
We'd have to do a speed study to lower the speed, or to raise it even. But the city cannot go in and, and change it on a state route, I don't believe. Priscilla's backing that up, you know, you cannot.
Do you know if you've done that around hospitals and other areas, like for a block or two, where there's-
I have not seen it, only at schools, where I've seen school crossing or school zones.
It seems, I mean, hospitals attract a lot of elderly people, it seems, and that's very similar to school kids, as far as the way they cross streets. So, it seems like it would be something worth considering.
That's something we can look at. I mean, that's why we're here, to get you guys' input. That's, we're at the ground level, so now's the time to bring up all the issues you've got. Some we may be able to address, some we may not.
Okay, thanks.
Aaron?
All right, so, thank you all for the work that you have been doing thus far. I wanted to go back to the, Priscilla? The initial, some of your earlier slides, you talked about the angle crashes, or, angle crashes are basically intersection accidents.
Right.
And then, you talked about, I don't, I don't know if I'm getting this all correctly, but I was, my question was along the lines of, how do you sort of control for or factor in the amount of traffic, traffic population of our city? Like, so you're comparing Urbana and this thoroughway to various other cities and other places? Am I correct?
We would be looking at roadway type, so it's a multi-lane urban facility, and we would look at ADT range. So, that we would, you know, I mean, you're, you would not, you know, we, we, the main thing is like, like ADT, and it's a multi-lane. So, you're not comparing a three-lane facility against a five-lane, or a, you know, 50,000 ADT road compared to this, nor a, a low-level, you know, road, a volume road. So, you're, so the intent is to compare like apples and apples, in essence.
Okay, and so, that's why I was asking the question, because when you talk about volume and population and stuff like that, with the amount of students that we have, and there's various different components to people from different countries coming here, driving in America for the first time, trying to get acclimated, there's a lot of different things that are factored into the traffic on University. So, do you, are all those factors in, in what you, in your conclusion of the rating that you would give that thoroughway?
Yeah, and, you know, and I liken this to, we did a road safety assessment, the Illinois Medical District up in Chicago. And so, you know, it's kind of similar in that you, with the, you know, you have the coroner's office, you have the hospital, everything's a lot, and you have a lot of different pedestrians. They're coming, they may not be familiar with that. Their focus may be on their family and, and getting to their, the facility that they need to be, and not necessarily paying attention to the surroundings. And one of the big things, and pedestrian and bicyclist crashes were overrepresented in that area, too. And what we found was pedestrian signals and, and the signal timing itself were two of the biggest contributing factors to the severe crashes. And, and so, so we feel like that those are two treatments that, in looking at these intersections, would, would be a definite plus, as far as like the signal timing and, and the pedestrian countdown heads, that type of thing. They will give more time for pedestrians to get across. And, and then also, there's the queues, as far as, okay, they've got the countdown heads, so they can see, I have enough time, I don't have enough time. In Springfield, we've done the flashing yellow arrows, and we've done, and on busy cor- like a busy, similar type corridor, I think the difference would be the pedestrian level that you have here. And then, in, in Peoria, we have over 100 intersections, again, where we've done the flashing yellow arrow. And we've seen reduction in crashes there, but also an improvement in capacity, because you're not having cars sitting there piling up, and then the light turns red, because you're just only letting so many through. So, and even the, the, the feedback that we're getting from the local law enforcement has been positive, as far as reducing crashes and getting traffic through the intersection a lot, a lot better. So, so I, I would say, based on those experiences right now, and, and looking at like the crash modification factors for those type of improvements, we, we should see some benefit in reductions in crashes along this.
So, on one of the other slides I saw, where one of the bicyclists was crossing University Avenue. And I was just wondering if we can get, pull that slide up. Yeah, they're just, I'm just wondering, who's the officer that's not enforcing the law right there? I was, do you know who that is?
That would be Illinois State Police, focused on doing the road safety assessment at that time.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering, because he wasn't even looking, I was-
Yeah, no, that would have been-
There's not, the bicyclist isn't doing anything wrong, they're changing lanes.
I'm just saying, Charlie-
Are they?
Okay, all right. So, the other question I had for you was in relationship to the lighting, the LED recommended lighting.
Yes, sir.
Will the study eventually offer a cost analysis, or that, for us, through that thoroughway, and what it would cost us to change it from the current lighting to LED? And a second part of that question is, for those of us who are getting a little older, I've noticed that nighttime driving is, that the lights are, are affecting my, my vision.
Yes, sir.
And so, how does the, the sort of amber lights compare to the LED lights in that regard?
Okay, so, first off, I can say it's not probably necessarily your age, because when I lived in Urbana 15 years ago, I thought at night-
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
I thought at nighttime, the light, you know, it was like the pavement mark, I'm going, what lane am I supposed to be in? And, and, but from, and I did speak to our lighting specialist before I came, because I'm not the expert on here. And he did say that, you know, in the past, like the high-pressure sodium versus the LED was kind of more of a preferential, do you prefer white lighting versus yellow lighting? But he did say that the, the white lighting or the LED actually gives a broader spectrum. So, in that low light, you can actually see better than you could with the, the high-pressure sodium. And then, and then he did say, too, with the, the way technology has come forward with the LED, it's a lot cheaper to, so before, it was more expensive to put on like a streetlights, but it's really come down in price, and so it's comparable to the high-pressure sodium. And then, moving forward, he, he said that actually, it would be cheaper, because industry is kind of getting away from making those other, the high-pressure sodium. They'd still have like parts and pieces if you wanted to, if you needed to get it, but it's going to cost you a lot more. And so, so from our perspective, and we, I would say, between us and working with the district, we did run initial costs to just do, like, kind of the recommendations that were coming from the, the road safety assessment and what they were looking at. And we were in the $5 million ballpark, and, and that's kind of everything, at least at this point, from what we were looking at. And, and so, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what-
And that's from Lincoln to Cunningham?
Yes, yes. It was from Wright to Cunningham.
From Wright to Cunningham, okay.
I can tell you that on the district level, we, on all the interstates that we're putting new lighting on, or revising our lights, they're all LED now.
Okay, I want to try to wrap this up here.
Thank you.
The, there is a past study that was done by RPC on University Avenue enhancement study. I assume you've seen that, or will see it. There were some things in there, some of which I disagreed with in terms of accommodations. One thing that was dismissed outright were bus pullouts for lack of space. Again, I still think those might be very useful, particularly where there are going to be high concentrations of students. So, if you could look at that. So, could you describe, to wrap this up, what the next steps are, and who pays for the improvements? This is a state route, and I know that we don't plow it. Somebody else does, and I don't know who pays for the stripes.
If you want to, we could allow you to do that.
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, I don't know who pays for the striping and stuff like that. So, yeah, if you could describe your next steps and how we pay for it, I'd appreciate that.
Well, our next step is to finish the study for this. And then, we'll go through the environmental clearances and right-of-way needed for what improvements we've chosen. General timeline for those would be 18 to 24 months. And as far as cost, it's a district-state project that we are going to submit for HSIP funding, which is the Bureau of Safety.
Okay.
There might be cost participation at the signals. If there's a, a road that has two side roads that are city, you'll have a cost participation there. Other than that, I'm not sure, any, other than any enhancements we make on it, other than safety, that's what this project was initially slated for, was for safety dollars. Anything up and beyond that would have to be paid for by the city.
So-
The safety dollars are 90% federal, 10% state match.
Okay, s- yeah, so, like, for example, the, the, the pavement markings, who, who takes care of making sure the pavement markings stay fresh? Are those on an annual basis, or do we, do we do that, or does?
No, that's something our guys do. And we go out and look at them at night. Probably every year, they could have someone going out and looking at them. And they evaluate them and repair the ones that need repaired. Yeah, the side, city side streets are not ours, and we wouldn't look at them.
Okay, any last question? Diane?
Just a quick one on process. When you come back with your recommendations, will they be prioritized in terms of, I mean, in the event that $5 million isn't available right of way? Do you prioritize what, what you're going to do in terms of what will give you the most bang for the buck? Or how does that work?
Well, first of all, we look at the entire project, the best, the best project we could have out there. And of course, that's probably going to be eight or nine million dollars, as everyone knows. But we would prioritize and see where we could cut, where you guys would want to participate, if you wanted additional items on the project.
So, some of those pieces would be things that we'd have to do and pay for, then?
Probably not, because you're not going to want to spend $2 million on a state route.
Well, it's like some of the signal stuff, if you have to improve some signals that are ours.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Or if you wanted to put lit street signs up, something like that, painted signals, or another expense that would be yours. Okay. I think you guys like black, don't you? Or is it?
Downtown, we do. Other areas of the city, we typically don't.
To stay with the standard.
Spot on a minimum, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you. Okay, next, next up is a discussion of licensed hauler operating hours. And I'm not sure how we're gonna, who's going to take the lead on this? Are you, Bill, or am I? I'll start it? Okay. And is Scott, Scott's here, too? Okay, great, okay. There has been, and this is an item more or less on the request of myself and several other council members, to address a number of complaints from constituents in the neighborhood in which I live. Bill Brown lives. There have also been some issues near Yankee Ridge School as well. And we do have a couple people who want to participate from the public. I don't know if Scott wants to give some of the history of this, but I, I'm going to pull up an email I got this morning. If, if you could speak for a couple minutes, just sort of provide some of the history of what's been going on over the last five to 10 years with respect to noise and, and hauling.
Sure.
I'll pull up this email and then read it.
Sure. So, we, the city regulates the days of the week that garbage and recycling is collected. It does, it has not ever regulated the operating hours of vehicles. There's been some discussion of the, the city's noise ordinance. The noise ordinance does not address garbage collection or licensed hauler vehicles. Just briefly, the noise ordinance addresses loud and raucous noise. So, that's like parties and shouting. It addresses construction and maintenance noise, so think about a circular saw or a hammer. It addresses motor vehicle and automobile noise in terms of idling stereos, sirens, mufflers, and squealing tires. And it addresses mechanical stationary noise, and think about a factory. So, it doesn't address the, the type of licensed hauler vehicles that is at discussion tonight.
Okay, here's a, an example of an email that I, I got, and it's one of many that have occurred over the past five to 10 years. So, this, and really irked that East Washington is turning into a squatting area for actively idling garbage trucks between 4:30 a.m. and 7:00 a.m., with attendant noises, lights, et cetera. One, in addition to the hauler that consistently tests their air brakes and performs a three-point turnaround in Washington and Carl at 4:30 a.m., we also now have Republic Services parking and idling on both sides of Washington, once in front of our house at 6:17 a.m., again at 6:29 a.m., after heading down the street and turning around to park slightly further west, still in the 400 block. They've got video and, and so on. And then, they said that the 800 number on the side of the truck doesn't bring up the, the company, just a hot sexy girl's chat line. So, that was, that was an interesting comment. There, there have been a number of people who have complained to me about, about being woken up between 4:00 and, and 6:00 a.m. by trucks, either idling in front of their house, the backup, the backup beeping noise, the loud clanging of, of garbage cans or, and/or dumpsters being dumped around the schools, and so on. I know the school district has responded to the concerns at both Yankee Ridge and Lille School. And some of that may have been dealt with. But, a number of residents are of the opinion that garbage trucks don't belong in the neighborhoods before 6:00 a.m. in the morning. Several years ago, four or five years ago, sat down at Public Works, and we had hammered out agreement informally that no trucks would show up in residential neighborhoods before 6:00 a.m. A couple years ago, that happened again. There was a particular hauler that served as an arbitrator of the issue. She no longer seems to be in the business, that mechanism ceased to have broken down. And, and there are a rise in complaints once again. So, a number of my- So, a number of my constituents are asking for hauling to be restricted before 6:00 a.m. in residential areas. I don't know if other council members want to chime in at this point. Okay, so we do have a couple of people from the public who wish to speak on this. Why don't we let them go first? Linda Lorenz, 409 West High.
Just a quick side address. I go so, back so far on this bicycle thing that I went out in the middle of the winter and we measured all of our sewer grates so that we could get new ones and we wouldn't drop into them. And we really appreciated that. Someone is emptying large containers across, I think across the street from me, there's several apartment complexes, one on Green Street and one actually on High Street. And it's, and it starts at sometime between 5:00 and 5:30 a.m. And it's beeping and backing up and dropping the thing down and all this kind of stuff and it would be nice if we didn't have that. So it, it's, it has something to do, I think, with, it's not people's little trash can out front, it's a great big huge dumpster kind of thing and it's very annoying.
Questions for Linda? Thank you. Okay, next up, Nathan.
It wasn't a question, it was more of a comment. No, it's okay. I'm just wanting to say that at work, while I'm working, we have quite a bit of load luggers or dumpsters that have to be dumped and I'm there at, at 6:00 a.m. and inside of a building, I can hear them, the beeping, I can hear them being lifted, I can hear them being dropped pretty heavily when they're raised up over the top of the, so it is pretty loud. I would imagine that would be pretty, pretty easy to wake up individuals who are sleeping at an early, at an early time, if it's 5:00 a.m., 5:30 a.m. So I, I know if I can hear it through a, a brick building on the first or second floor, then I'm sure that you can hear it loud and clear in your bedroom that early in the morning. So I just wanted to, to say that on the record.
Okay, then we've heard from these folks before, they're going to give us an update on, on their, their work on this area. Nathan Palowski and Amon Quo.
Sorry, I just happened to put the presentation in. Do you know how to work this?
On the right-left side, there should be one.
How do we present? You have one of these computers, don't you? It's, it's got to be somewhere.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, probably. Well, we are the, sorry, we are the Urbana Trash Improvement Project. We have returned. We're, ah, we're interested in talking to you about the trash hauling situation. We know you've been looking at solutions for the, the noise issues, but we think that this is reflective of a, of a broader problem more generally. We're interested in offering some information we think is pertinent and some cheaper solutions. And I think possibly even profitable solutions. Would you like to cover this?
Okay, so from talking to people and surveying people this summer, we found that there's a strong consensus for change. 85% of people surveyed say garbage hauling is important or very important.
And that's, that's measured with other issues that the city council or various volunteers could be dealing with.
There are many reasons why people support a change. They dislike the inefficiency of the garbage hauling system. They feel like customer service with a lot of garbage haulers has been an issue. They want to reduce prices and there's been a relatively uncommon complaint about noise.
Well, I, I don't know if I'd say super uncommon. It's, it's not one of the, it's not one of the largest complaints. I think that would have to be, you know, as it says, inefficiency, customer service, and price. The, the biggest concerns about change don't exist. I think this quote really shows people's interest. That's, that's actually, that's verbatim. However, there, there are some very rare but surprisingly vocal comments, some, a lot of people, well, no, not a lot of people, but very, very few very vocal people have told us that they're really against letting small local businesses die out. Fortunately, this is very unlikely in any solution because it turns out that the small local businesses are the most cheap, the most well-liked, and largest haulers in Urbana. So that's good news for, for anyone trying to enact a solution. And about 5% of people have vocalized a desire for, you know, a free market solution. The free market is great and all that. That's an opinion. So the first solution is apparently a little bit mislabeled. I guess it's not an issue of noise regulations, but of an agreement and noise regulations could be used. These are motor vehicles. And the, the idea behind this is you would limit hauling to daylight hours when people aren't sleeping and add a day of hauling. So currently, the city is divided into three zones, the Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday zones of hauling. If you add a zone, you can reduce the total amount of hauling that any garbage hauler has to do in a single day, which reduces the amount of time they would have to spend outside of the daylight hours doing their hauling. A concern that some people have brought up is the safety of schoolchildren. The fact of the matter is haulers are already hauling during the times when people are going to and from school. So they're not going to be in any more danger. They're not going to be in any, excuse me. They're not going to be in any less danger necessarily, but it's not, you're not exacerbating any kind of problem. I'd like to add that this is absolutely not a complete solution to the garbage hauling, but I think it would be pretty good in handling the, the noise. And obviously, this is, this is quite a cheap one.
Another solution is grassroots consolidation. Many people have tried to organize their neighborhood or block to use a single hauler. About half has managed to successfully do this. About half have been crippled by a lack of authority where, and the city can provide by endorsing some grassroots garbage hauling consolidation. And it would save the city money in road repairs.
This is very popular. I mean, people, people had been doing this before we talked to anybody. It was, it was an effort that had already started. So that's, I think that's worth pointing out. A little bit more information here. If, if you do want to support it and choose to go beyond simply saying, hey, this is a great idea, you should do this, you might want to provide a little information. You could, you, you have a website already. It's probably not going to be very difficult to add a couple of PDF links. I know a guy. If you, if you really wanted help and provide information, I would say listing which haulers serve in which wards or areas, that would be very helpful. A lot of people have an interest in who dumps in the Mohammed Aquifer, but have forgotten that they have that interest until you bring it up. Over the summer, we provided what we have been calling talking cards because we can't think of a better name. We would hand these out to people at the farmer's market and they were basically a small sheet of information that you could fill in, a sort of Mad Libs of personal information about garbage hauling. This is my hauler, this is what I think of them, this is what I want. And you would put it in your neighbor's mailbox and they would see it and hopefully they would email you or call you or just put it back in your mailbox. And you'd start a communication back and forth and pretty soon you'd start to see different blocks gravitating towards certain haulers. You could put these on your website. We have them on our website if you'd like to. You could absorb our website. That would be pretty easy, I think. And of course, you could create a website to help people organize their, their blocks, streets, and, you know, however, however people are going to be choosing to organize themselves.
Some more ways you could support consolidation is to meet with blocks, streets, or more subdivisions to talk about possible consolidation, have a meeting place, times, maybe a website about this meeting. City approval does mean a lot. We'd like to stress this, as said earlier, about half of organizing efforts have failed due to a lack of authority or officialness. And you would create groups and oversee the first meeting and if anyone needs assistance, you could provide that.
This, this solution might seem a little bit more costly, but we actually believe it'll be cost-effective given the, you know, the, the damage that these garbage haulers do to roads and, you know, various other negative externalities. That's not right.
Yeah.
Uh-oh. I guess that's all then.
Yeah.
Somebody pulled the plug on these guys, what's going on?
Okay, questions for Amon and Nick?
Go ahead in any order.
Aaron and then Bill.
So Damon and Nick?
Amon.
Amon.
And Nathan.
And then Matt and Nathan, or what do you go by?
Nathan.
Nathan, yeah, sorry.
Well, thank you both for coming. How old are you guys?
I'm 17, he's 18.
Well, I'm, I'm really appreciate you coming to offer solutions and ways to deal with this. Can you talk just quickly for maybe 30 seconds on what, on consolidation, what that looks like?
Well, generally, from, from what we've seen, if we're going to be continuing to assume this is a grassroots sort of thing, consolidation looks like a couple of people on a block getting fed up with the, the noise and the lights and all that of garbage hauling. And they email a few of their friends who email, you know, all the people on the block. You get a, you get a email discussion going and you agree to only have one garbage hauler. This has worked a surprising number of times. It's also deteriorated a surprising number of times. But I think the, the really surprising word, surprising thing, to keep using that word, is just how many times people have tried to do this. It's, it's kind of astounding. I don't think we have any concrete numbers. We never wrote this down, so we're not, you know, we're not going to give you any numbers.
But you're saying that the consolidation is trying to get everyone on the block to use the same hauler once, so it just happens once a week as opposed to coming three times a week or something like that? Is that what you're saying?
Well, on any given block, you're not going to get haulers coming on multiple different days because the city is divided geographically and those geographical regions all have a day on which garbage haulers visit. The main issue is that if you've got three different garbage haulers servicing the same block, you've got three times as many, three times as much noise and light and road damage and greenhouse gases and, I mean, the list goes on. They're, they're not particularly fantastic machines, these trucks.
Well, I just want to say that I really appreciate you all being involved. I'm sure you learned a lot about government and how it works and we need more young people to be involved the way you guys are, so I really appreciate it. And I think there's going to be an actual solution and one of your proposed solutions may be very, may be very useful. But thank you again.
Thank you.
Bill and then the mayor?
Yeah, as you were going around talking to people about their garbage hauler, I wondered if there was anything that stuck out as far as how people choose their hauler or what they like about their hauler. We have, I don't know, half a dozen at least licensed haulers. And was there anything that indicated why they were loyal to a hauler? How do they differentiate themselves?
Well, we, we've got eight haulers, by the way. Licensed haulers. I don't know how many unlicensed haulers are running around in the black market trash hauling business. I don't imagine it's many. But it seems to me, based on, you know, the, the brief conversations we've had with people and the number of people who have listed themselves as dissatisfied with their haulers or have complained vocally to us, that people essentially choose a hauler based on who one of their neighbors has at the time of buying their house. And after that, they simply don't think about it unless something really drastic happens. So price, price changes will cause people to choose a different hauler as will, you know, incredible dissatisfaction. People who have had their garbage not hauled tend to switch, but only if it's happened several times in a row, which is impressive. People who have, what else was it? What was I going to say? You were there. Well, I mean, I should know it too.
But nobody picked a hauler because they had quiet trucks or nobody thought of that?
The, the trucks are pretty much all the same, as far as I know. It seems like people aren't putting a lot of thought into this decision before they make it and after that, it's just write a check every month or have it automated with your credit card and never think about it again unless the trash hauling people swear at you and then dump trash on your front lawn.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor then Diane.
I thought one of your charts said that there were very few people comparing, complaining about noise.
Well, not very few. There's, it is actually why we got into the project in the first place. It's, it's, I think, one of the, it's, it's probably the smallest major concern that people have.
What, what percent said that noise was a concern?
I don't know off the top of my head. We don't have, we don't have numerical data on that. But on the, on the Wounded Surf, for instance, and I believe also the Sinaloa Surf.
No.
All right. Well, in the, on the Wounded Surf in that case and just various people who have been talking to us about the project, it is definitely a major concern. It's not the largest, but it is still a major concern.
Okay, one, one thing is that number of surveys have shown that people have more trust in their garbage hauler than in their congressman, which probably is realistic, but you know, that's what you're up against. I think a lot of people are loyal to their garbage hauler because this is somebody that shows up all the time and gets the job done.
Well, that's what we thought, but, you know, as we said, there's an overwhelming support for change. Less than 5% of people argued that the city should stay out of garbage hauling. And 85% of people are for some kind of change. City council can provide that.
Diane?
How many people did you survey and what area were you surveying for you?
Originally, we, this is last year, we surveyed 98%, I believe, of residents on Nevada.
Of Vermont.
Or, oh, wow. I live there. In, in the couple of contiguous blocks, I think between wards four and seven.
So it was, it was on, on one street, on Vermont Street?
Yes.
Okay.
And this summer, we surveyed houses all over Urbana, focusing on Ward One. We also took surveys at the farmer's market, although we're not including those in the data that we have presented here because the, the average desire for change or the, how important do you think change is responses tended to be noticeably higher in farmer's market responses. So we've, we've decided to not count those as a, as a special partition of the population.
Well, and, and I'd, I'd like to thank you for your interest and, and your dedication to this topic. I will say that one factor in this, well, a big factor in this town is the number of rental properties. And a property owner who owns multiple properties usually wants to hire one person to service those properties. And so that makes a big difference in neighborhoods where you have a lot of rental. And I know when we had more rental properties, we had to find a hauler who would offer backdoor service because we couldn't always depend on our tenants. service, because we couldn't always depend on our tenants to bring, you know, the cans out to the curb and take them back in a timely manner. So, that has an impact on what your choices are too. So, it's, and thirdly, as far as noise, the complaints I've had this last few months have been centered not so much on noise itself as when the noise was occurring, and that was when the hauler at Yankee Ridge School was showing up at four to four-thirty in the morning. Now, we got that taken care of, so it's back to six in the morning, but otherwise, I haven't heard many of the noise complaints, but when I did, it was related to the timing, and that is related to the hours of operation, which is maybe something we can address. But again, thank you for all you've done.
I'd just like to respond to that. I think you mentioned, what was I going to say? Why don't you know what I'm supposed to know? Somebody has to do it.
Was it the apartments?
Yes, thank you. I knew you knew it. He's holding that on me. That was actually a problem encountered by at least one of the people we talked to who engaged in a consolidation effort. They were fine with there being two haulers on that street. The people of the street eventually settled on one hauler. They couldn't get the apartment complexes to change, so now there's two haulers on that street, but it's still less than eight.
Okay, I want to get this wrapped up. So, Dennis, quick one?
Not for you gentlemen, but thank you for your input. I also got a couple of emails, and one from a person on Main Street who's been a person...
So, Nathan and Amon can go now? No more questions?
Yeah, I don't have a...
We have a little bit more public input too, so, yeah.
So, we're not going to lose this conversation?
No, no, we're not done. Yeah, okay. So, thank you, Nathan and Amon, for your continued work on this. I'm sure we're not done. Okay. I know we have one more member of the public, Becky Mead, who'd like to address this issue.
Hello. I live on Michigan Avenue, and we had been having garbage haulers come at four in the morning, and because we live in a close place where there, you know, sound echoes between the houses, the streets are close together, you can hear the garbage truck come down one street, and then come down your street, and then come down the next street. And so, I called and I said, you know, this is ridiculous. You can't come at four in the morning. It's against the law. They said, no, we're completely in our rights. And I said, well, okay, then we're going to make it against the law, because it's ridiculous you're coming at four in the morning. So, they've stopped coming to my neighborhood, but I am dead certain that that garbage hauler has gone, you know, six blocks away where I can't hear him and complain to him anymore, and is driving somebody else crazy. And it is loud, and there are eight garbage haulers, and there are eight garbage haulers that come down my narrow little street, you know, between six in the morning, or seven in the morning, and five at night, and it really doesn't have to be at four in the morning. It is, you know, some of them, we've had complaints on Woonah, where some people say they park on the corner, and then they do all the compacting and stuff in front of their house at four in the morning, which is loud. I mean, it's just, it is not, it is a huge quality of life. I mean, you shouldn't have to dread every Monday morning, knowing that the garbage haulers are going to start coming at four in the morning. They are at least as loud as people in their cars making noise, or they're at least as big a nuisance as people who start construction at six in the morning. I mean, it should just be part of the noise ordinance. They cannot come before six in the morning. They're going to be running all day anyways. It doesn't really matter. So, that's what I would say.
Questions for Becky? Okay, Becky's comments are very reflective of the many emails that I've gotten, both posted through Woonah or directly to me, of the concern. And so, thank you. Dennis, you wanted to add your own email?
Well, yes. A couple of weeks ago, this topic, I've heard about this topic several times. I know Carolyn Baxley, who's on Main Street, has been, this has been a topic of concern for her, and I'm thinking, well, she's got a rather large yard, but of course, she's got businesses and other apartments or whatever behind her on the next streets. So, she is close to a lot of noise as well. She complains about the time. She wondered, or has been wondered, I don't know if it was her specifically, if the way to handle collection would be to assign one collection service to one particular area of the city, and divide up the city into however many collection unit services there were, so that at least in one area, all the garbage could be collected uniformly at one time, and then it would be done. But if you have so many trucks coming and going, servicing every other household, it becomes quite a racket. The other thing was, what about making this utility that is controlled by the city, as many urban cities do do, i.e. the city becomes the, controls the garbage collection in the community, and provides city dumpsters in which to collect the garbage up and down, either in alley or behind people's homes?
Okay, well, my thinking on this discussion was to get it started, provide some questions to staff, and let them go look at some potential solutions. There are three that have been mentioned here so far, three options that have been mentioned. One is the zones. Portland, Oregon did that many, many years ago, took the number of haulers they had in the business, and then divided the city up based on proportional share. Another is to simply incorporate garbage hauling into the noise ordinance, and have a six a.m. residential, or seven a.m. residential start time. And then, another option is, of course, a city bid out and control service. A number of cities do that around the country. That allows for fairly sophisticated garbage hauling. I know in many places on the West Coast, one truck will come, it's very automated. They have automated pickup of recycling, garbage, and lawn clippings and whatnot waste on a weekly basis. And they can do it cheaper than we do, our system currently, for the services that we do provide. Am I missing any of the potential options that are out there? Consolidation, in what sense?
In their sense.
Okay, isn't that a version of zones? Would that be a zone system?
I think it was similar to that.
Okay, so, a neighborhood consolidation then, as opposed to full-out zones? Okay, so we'll add that as a fourth one. Bill?
Yeah, I just have a couple of thoughts, maybe from Scott or one of the garbage haulers, if they wanted to respond, what the impact of starting at six o'clock in the morning would be, how that would change things. And then, the other thing, I wanted to mention is, it seems like garbage hauling would be kind of ideal for hybrid or electric vehicles, because there's, you could use regenerative braking, and maybe be quiet, the trucks could be quieter when they brake, rather than using the hydraulic brakes, and it would just be more efficient. So, I wondered if anything like that exists as far as garbage trucks, and that could be a sustainability issue too, I don't know. And if we did have a starting time limit, maybe as an incentive for people to use hybrid or electric vehicles if they turn out to be quieter, we could make the starting time different for them, make it earlier or something.
Well, I think we have three haulers that have shown up here, so if you guys could state your names, please?
My name's Josh Parr. I'm from Dale Levitt Disposal.
Okay.
Russell Schaefer from Schaefer Sanitary Company.
Josh Johnson from Chris's Service Company.
Okay, so, one thing I want to address is, so, I can sit here and I can name many negatives to starting later. Safety, not just for the public, which is obviously a huge thing in this city. I have kids that live here. The community is very important to me, and we certainly take any complaints very seriously. But I believe that the benefits to starting later are very small, and the negatives are very large. And it's not just, you know, pedestrians and cyclists and kids going to school, because we try and get the high-traffic areas and the school areas out first, because we know that those are dangerous areas. Our trucks have many blind spots, and they're very dangerous to drive. And then, not only that, if we start later, then our employees are out in the heat, and they're out in the cold longer. It's more wear and tear on our trucks. It takes more gas, because it takes longer to get to each job when there's a lot of traffic out. Now, I can't speak personally for commercial. I only have a few dumpsters, and they're basically outside of town. So, when it comes to dumpsters, that's not really something that I can speak to. But I just feel like we should really ask ourselves what the benefits to starting later really would be. And like I said, we take complaints very seriously. When somebody calls, actually, the complaint on West Michigan was to my company, and I have since then stopped coming down that portion of West Michigan at the time. I have changed my route. So, if I can, excuse me, if I can get the complaint myself, I want to fix the problem, and I've done many things to reduce the noise. One of the things that I've done with my truck is, when I pack the truck, I can actually do it when I'm moving, so I don't have to stop in front of somebody's house and pack it. And we, every single morning, we talk about, we are quiet. We don't yell. We don't, we've changed our route to where we don't back up as many places, and we, like I said, we take this very seriously, and I think we all do.
Pull the mic towards you, please.
But not only that, but once you get into a starting later, you guys are worried about your little few complaints that you've gotten in the past five to ten years. Now, when we're out there later, traffic's going to be worse, everybody's going to be backed up, and it's going to double complaints.
If we have even one hauler picking everybody up, there's still going to be numerous trucks, no matter what.
Well, when you go to the one hauler, you're taking away from, you're monopolizing the city basically on the garbage, which I've never agreed with. You're just taking from our livelihood when it comes to that.
Can I speak on that as well?
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, garbage hauling is kind of one of the things where, you know, you don't get a lot of public praise, but you get a lot of negative reactions. Let me just tell you, I get letters every week from customers telling me how great of a job we do, and I do things for the elderly, such as we go up and get their garbage at the house, and we pull their recycle can down for them. There are things that we do that no other hauler will be able to do.
Okay. Mr. Schaefer? You're good? Okay. I think one of the questions that Bill had was, okay, not everyone starts at four in the morning. Some of the companies start later. Our recycling services start at seven-thirty, that by contract. Why do you have to start at four in the morning? You've given some reasons, but why couldn't you just start at six?
I think part of the thing is, is the recycling, since they have such a high volume, they can start somewhere where potentially, it takes them a lot longer to get through neighborhoods. So, they could start somewhere, and so, no matter what, no matter what time you start, after six o'clock, there are way more people out. And so, every single job gets harder. And, you know, as for the recycling, I can't speak to that, because they have a contract, but I know that if you ask their drivers, after six o'clock, it becomes, there becomes a traffic problem.
Eric?
I wonder if one solution would be to rotate where you start at four, or four-thirty, so that the same people won't be woken up for a year or whatever. You could do it...
Can I also just add one?
Just asking.
One other thing. I mean, I could be wrong, but I feel like the majority of the complaints are coming from the Monday zone, and so, maybe we need to figure something out in that zone. Because to my knowledge, I have not had a single complaint on Tuesday and Wednesday.
Okay. So, what is the Monday zone?
It's from Anderson down to Illinois. So, Illinois and Anderson, everything in between there, right? Yeah.
So, it's Lincoln and Anderson are the east and west boundaries, and then the north?
Illinois all the way.
Illinois south?
Yeah.
Okay, to Florida, or?
Past. It goes all the way.
Way south, because we're in the Monday zone.
Yeah, it goes all the way.
Okay. Okay, so that's a big chunk of wards, one, bit of two, four, all of four, and a part of, a big part of seven. So, that's an interesting point, that it's the Monday zone. One of the questions, one of the solutions was to, one of the suggestions was to create an additional zone, and spread things out over four days instead of three.
Well, the only problem with that is, is everybody's established now. We've all switched it around so we can accommodate the city and their ordinances. So, we're all pretty much set, and to switch it up, it's not just like we can just say, hey, we're not going to do that today. You know, it takes a big process to switch people over. So, it's not an easy task to, like you said, you know, maybe just rotate your route. Well, then, we go by route lists, and everybody's in order from the way they're picked up. So, if we switch the order, well, then we have to go through the computer and reorganize everybody, and switch everything around, and it's pretty much hard. It's almost impossible.
Can I speak to that real fast? I think that that's kind of another thing too, is when you have multiple drivers, you, if you switch things, I have found, if you switch things around, people will get missed. And so, it's very important that we keep it the same every time, because we want to ensure that every single person gets picked up.
Okay, Aaron?
Okay, so, first of all, I want to say to all three of you that I don't know if, I understand thankless jobs, okay? And...
We love it, though.
I understand. I don't know if I would want to do that. And I...
I've been doing it since I was about ten years old here in Urbana, so...
Well, and it's appreciated. I mean, I think that, I don't want you all to get the wrong idea, even from the people who have a particular complaint, right? So, we have to find a way to make it work for everyone. And what I have not heard from you is, what is your response to the complaint?
Well, I think I addressed that when I talked about the amount of things that I've done to make, to ensure that we are quiet in the morning. You know, like I said, my truck, I can pack, instead of sitting in front of somebody's house and packing it, I can drive, and it packs while it's driving, and it makes far less noise. And the packing is a huge part of what, I'm sure, the noise, well, besides the dumpsters. And like I said, I can't really speak to that aspect of it.
So, the, you said the complaint came from, for your business?
Correct.
Right. And so, you just took the route to another area?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
So...
And I have had no complaints since then.
So, when Charlie was asking about...
And actually, can I also...
Excuse me, just let me finish asking my question. So, when you, when Charlie spoke about changing the routes around, you made it seem as though it was difficult to do that, but yet you're saying that you did do that.
Yes, actually, I'm a very small company, and I'm the owner and the driver.
Okay, so how, so it's just you?
Me, not like, I can't speak for the other haulers.
Oh, okay. All right, that's clear too. Thank you.
Can I also address, I actually did speak to a number of my customers in that area, and a lot of them, the response was, I didn't even know what time you were coming, meaning...
Oh, well, we did until you changed your truck last year, or whatever it was, the noisy truck.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, everybody knew when you hit the neighborhood with that truck.
I would... I can accept that.
Yeah, the truck made a huge difference. The, the truck made a huge difference. Okay, so, you know, I understand that piece of it. The electric truck or hybrid truck, that would be a substantial investment.
That, that would be a beautiful thing, but these trucks are very, very, very expensive.
Right, yeah. I understand.
But people might be willing to pay more too.
We're not coming to any obvious conclusions here. You're three of the eight hauling companies in the community. I think we have some things that directed, you know, we've got some ideas here for staff to go look at to continue this discussion. We've got some people that have been waiting patiently who want to speak and it's nine o'clock and, and the chair is back.
It's past garbage men's bedtime.
Yeah, yeah. So, let's, we need to tackle this once and for all because, you know, we had it solved until a couple of years ago, for the most part. The complaints are back again and, and they keep coming in. And this has been going on for over, since I started on city council in 89. So, it's a long time to have an issue and not have a solution. So, I really would like to see this solved during this term, this, this, this term of mine on city council. So, that's, that's my goal here. So, I'd like to keep this going.
Scott?
One other thing. Is it complaints in the spring and the fall when the windows go up? Or is it all year round?
I'd have to, I'd have to go look, I can, I need to go through all of the email through the years that I've got. I've got 20 years of email here that I can go looking through. And I'll do that and see if there is a pattern. That is a good, good suggestion. Diane.
And is it all garbage companies or is there one particular company that may have?
It's the ones that come at four in the morning.
So, it's not, it's not related to the company, it's the time of the pickup?
That's right, yeah.
And so, you all start at four in the morning?
No, I start at 4:30.
I, I start at about 4:30, but I actually don't start in that area. So, where I, where I assume the complaints are coming from, that's not where I start. When I get into that area, it's about, I'd say 5:30.
5:30. And Mr. Schaefer, when do you start?
I, I used to come in about 4:30 and now I'm backed off to 5:30.
So, we're, we're close to six anyway. So, it's, looks like it's more like 5:30. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'll work with Scott and Bill to keep this going.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. While we're, while we're, I was going to suggest that we just finish off public input. We have two more people to speak on, on this. So, next up is Matthew Riggs on ordinance number 2015, the liquor licenses. And I'm going to turn the chair back over to Eric. We'll come, we'll come back to the meeting, we'll come back.
Good evening. I'm not sure if you've all had a chance to read the newest revision of the...
Sorry, Matt. Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
I'm not sure if you've all had a chance to read it, but hot off the presses as of a couple of hours ago, the liquor license for microbrewery, establishing a new one. So, I don't want to talk too much about my position on it unless everybody's already clear with it, but I'm, maybe you're not because it just came to you.
I think, I think you should, it's on the agenda coming up. So, I think you should go ahead and raise your concerns now and then we'll talk about them and, and if we have more questions, I'll have you then.
Okay, yeah. First of all, I want to say thanks to Chris Marks for involving me in the process and letting me weigh in on it. The summary from my point of view is that up to this point, the city has had various liquor licenses for establishments. And there's now a new proposal for a new class of liquor license, MB, which would include microbreweries.
Mayor.
We changed it this afternoon. And we're going to have the same retail part, but just have a license for a microbrewery because that's what state law requires. Are you happy with the change?
I'm not totally happy that we have to have a new license. And I was not aware that the state requires that there's a city license.
Yeah, that's the reason.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at that. And again, I just got really the first draft of this on Thursday and the, and the second draft of it just now. So, I'm just trying to stay abreast of this before it actually gets approved.
Okay.
And so, that was maybe my, I'll keep it very short. I know this is going long. So, maybe I would just suggest, give me like a week to work with the city on this before we would actually like approve or disapprove.
This is just the committee, anyway.
Right.
The question I have is basically related to costs on this issue. So, and I'm trying to find where the costs are on this newest version. It strikes me that we want to, this is something we want to encourage, but at the same time, we want to, we want to keep the prices to be competitive with other places in, in the state and, and across the, across Wright Street and that sort of thing. Mayor?
What we did this afternoon was I wanted to keep the, the retail ones the same throughout the city. And the only difference is the microbrewery and I've recommended $500 for that. Okay?
Yep. And that's, thank you. We can probably talk this, not in a committee meeting or anything like that. I just wanted to say, I hope we don't want to like just say, "Yes, this is good and move on." I'd like to talk a little bit more about that, but not in this forum.
You're at the Urbana City Council. We will talk about this.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm happy.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Riggs? Okay. Okay, next up is Brian Vera Weiss. Am I pronouncing correctly? To talk about the Racial Justice Task Force.
Thank you, Mayor and, and city council members. What brings me here tonight is that I am concerned about our community. I'm concerned that even though the county board approved the Racial Justice Task Force, it may prove to be a divisive factor rather than a healing one. An example, WILL Online indicated that Patsy Petrie, the board chair, who seems to have sole responsibility for the, who's on the committee, expects to have 21 people on the task force. That's an awful lot of people to come to consensus about anything. Some of the other alternative suggestions were for 11 people on the task force, which seems much more operational. This elected body, you, have stepped up and done the right thing in the past. An example is Resolution 201502009-R regarding incarceration alternatives in Champaign County. You went on the line and said you wanted to be part of the solution there. I'm asking you today to ask Patsy Petrie to appoint a representative or two, recommended and supported by you, our city council, to ensure that all the voices from Urbana are heard in this dialogue. There are those in our community who wish to belittle and demonize those who advocated for the Racial Justice Task Force. An example is Jim Day or Die, an employee of the News Gazette. In his commentary of October 25th, he writes, "Well, it could have been worse. The plainclothes police present were not required to maintain order. Audience members choosing to express their contempt and hostility for the board with words, not actions." Well, even I, as an older white guy, reading what, what he says, I interpret it as, "Well, the police didn't step in and grab you by the throat this time, but wait." Such talk is both hurtful to potential community healing and deeply unfair to our law enforcement officers. The people in pain who feel that their needs are not being listened to need, need to be stakeholders in the outcome of the Racial Justice Task Force. You can be on their side, you, the council members, can be on their side and let them know you are by asking to participate in the task force itself. Again, that was one of the other alternative task force recommendations, was that both Champaign and Urbana have representatives on the task force. So, I would, I know this is brand new, they've just passed it, you haven't consented at all, but I would, I would wish in, in your deliberation and how to proceed on this, that you might put your best foot forward and, and, and help participate in this direction. Thank you.
Any other, any questions? Yes, Mayor Pressing.
Just, just a comment. Patsy Petrie did send an email and I responded that I thought we would be very interested, but we would like to participate in how, what kind of questions should be asked because I think it's a very broad issue.
It's way too broad.
It's not, you know, the justice system is just the tip of the iceberg.
I agree.
So, it needs to be comprehensive. We should look at what we are doing in this community, everything from education to employment opportunities, look at the whole thing.
Right.
So, any other questions or brief comments on this point? Charlie, can I ask you to take the chair for just a second?
Sure.
So, I guess that, so I would only comment that one thing we can do is, is immediately would be to refresh Ms. Petrie on our resolution because we've really defined some of the, some part of, of this entire agenda that we think is important. So, but we can, you know, this isn't the time to debate that, but we can, we can discuss this in the future. A question for you, Eric, actually, would be in terms of the process, I think part of it is the IDOT task force is going to, I think, have, have some segue into...
Right.
This other matter. So, I don't know if you want to address that at all. Well, I'll just inform you that in the meeting that I just came from, we voted on the very final version of the, of the task force report. So, that we expect that to be, you know, cleaned up of all of the little, you know, marginal comments that were involved in, in, and be issued to this body and, and put on public, probably, probably November 2nd is reasonable date. That's, would be the expected date. So, that'll be, that'll be out there at, at this time. Now, that only addresses, well, it only directly addresses one particular aspect of the racial justice issue, but it addresses that particular aspect very thoroughly. And there is some commentary on other issues that relate to this. So, that, that, that will, I think, certainly be available in part of the mix.
In the, in the WILL, just news, online news article, it did said that, that she wanted representatives from, from all, all stakeholders, I guess. She didn't say stakeholders, but that's what I read. And, but I think the city is a stakeholder. And that's why I'm encouraging you to have a represent, just like you're the representative on the IDOT, that you have a representative or appoint a representative that you feel would represent the needs of the, the people of the city who don't feel like they're getting heard.
Well, we can, you know, we, we don't have it on the agenda to discuss.
Yeah, I know. I just...
But we can do, but we certainly can discuss it at a future meeting. Thank you, thank you for raising that. Any other questions? Back to Eric. Okay. And, and I apologize, because I came in late, I didn't realize that we were not done with the staff reports. So, I...
Wait, I'm the first one, maybe?
Okay. Yeah, we, we do have, so, so clarify for me, please, Charlie, where do we stand on? Oh, okay, okay. So, so I do have a slip here from Reverend Evelyn B. Underwood and Bishop King James Underwood. They do not wish to address the committee, but ask that their concerns be, continuing concerns be entered into the record on the sewage problem at Dr. Ellis subdivision. And now, now staff reports and, and Mayor Pressing.
Okay, I will be brief. We had a meeting this morning, cordial and productive meeting with City of Champaign, Mike Munson and Elizabeth Hannan and I. And we met with the City of Champaign staff and MetCAD staff, including City Manager Dorothy David and MetCAD Director Ralph Caldwell. And so, the Urbana issue, which I called the tree, Champaign agreed with our request to stretch this year's 18% Urbana increase over five years, beginning next year. And that's similar to what they agreed to last year when we had a 28% increase. And in addition, Champaign offered to smooth the future increases for all the members. So, next year, instead of a planned 16% increase, it will be 6.5%. And that will save us, the City of Urbana, $64,000 in next year's budget. And then for the big picture, the forest, I'm working on establishing a coalition of local governments, I'm starting with cities and counties, to work on issues of common interest such as unfunded mandates. And that includes getting to sustainable funding for 911 system. And the Mohammed Aquifer Coalition worked very well to highlight a problem and to work with our legislators for a solution. And I think we need the same approach with unfunded mandates. And I'm starting with the largest cities and counties in downstate Illinois, specifically mayors, managers and sheriffs. And I've also recommended that the MetCAD board discuss the funding issues threatening us and most local governments around the state and come up with a resolution to present to the 911 Services Advisory Board, establish to develop a statewide system over the next two years. Happy to answer any questions? No questions?
Question? Yeah, Diane.
Since we're borrowing again this year, is there going to be interest charged on this loan?
The City of Champaign talked about maybe a 1% interest, which would be like $118, I believe. Is that right? $180? $188.
Okay, so, Eric, so just to be clear, we're not reducing our total liability, but we are stretching our payments out. Yes, Bill?
So, I guess there would be, there would be some kind of agreement that will come for counsel for this, like an intergovernmental agreement?
Right, it's going to go to the MetCAD board. And last time, we had an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Champaign. The changing from the 16% down to 6.5%, that'll just go through the regular budget process of the MetCAD board.
I guess it'd help me if we could see exactly what our budgeted amount for each of the next five years would be, including the past.
Right, we'll, we'll give you all that, but this just happened today. And for the next five years, would be very hard to do because it's all going to be changed in the two years that this statewide board is in place. And their function is to set up a statewide system. And I want them to focus on financial sustainability for local governments. They gave Chicago, I said $3 last time I talked about this, it's actually $3.90. They gave the rest of the state 87 cents. They let Chicago pick their own rate. So, Chicago has $3.03 more than we do. And if we just had $1.50, which is what our voters approved, they're going to work out those figures and see if that's a, a starting point for our system.
Mr. Madigan.
So, just following up on Bill's comments, I guess it would be helpful to me to understand if nothing changes in five years, can we see what this agreement would, would mean financially each year?
Right. That's why I have been saying for several years that the current plan is unsustainable because it demands so much more from the local governments because the phone company, the phone contributions, which were voted by voters, have been cut from $1.50 down to 87 cents.
I understand all that.
So, that's why, you know, I focus on two things. What our immediate budget concern is versus the long-term for everybody in the whole state.
I understand the problem with the current system. I also understand what you're advocating for. I guess on what I'm asking... I guess on what I'm asking for here is to see if nothing changes in the next five years.
Yes, we can give you a chart on that.
What does this agreement mean?
Yes, we will give you that. Spelled out, spelled out.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Oh, yes, Diane.
I just, I'm just looking at, no, never mind. I, too, am very anxious to see, I mean, this adds another 40. This, this means instead of paying back an extra $25,000, which is added to each of our payments for the next four years, it's now adding about 46 or 47,000 dollars to our payments. So, again, if nothing changes, we're kind of digging ourselves into a hole. But I hope something changes. But anyway, I do wanna see what exactly the numbers look like, if, if we continue on the road we're on. It just, I just kinda see us digging ourselves into a hole.
Well, it's, it adds $18,000 in repayment, but that's smoothing it out so it can keep more in line with what our revenue is. So that's the reason I did this. And Champaign has agreed, and they've lowered it for next year to 6.5%. So they have agreed to smooth out this thing, instead of having these huge increases at the beginning. And I think that's a very positive thing to do, but that does not address the real problem, which is the basic underfunding in most of the state.
So my understanding is that we had a, an issue about scheduled payments, right? And we had not paid our scheduled amount. And so what happens, what, what you have negotiated at this particular point is that the next few payments will bring us back to in good standings, basically. Is that correct?
Well, this agreement brings us in good standing.
Okay.
Because they're saying that they, they accept what we have budgeted. And so the increase that we couldn't support is going to be spread out over five years to make the increases smaller each year. And in the meantime, we're not gonna just sit here and wait till five years are up. We're gonna be working with other governments to address the underlying problem, which is underfunding for local governments.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to understand the, Diane made a comment about 46,000. I just don't want us to throw numbers out to the public if we're going to. What I understand at this point is that we have an agreement with MetCAD, with the City of Champaign. They're fine with the payments that we're gonna make. And we're going to stretch those payments out over a five-year period. And in the meantime, we'll be working to address the, the concerns about the differences.
Right.
So at this point, our partnership with MetCAD, with the City of Champaign and Rantoul is fine?
Right.
Okay.
Ms. Marlin.
Now, does the MetCAD, this goes now to the MetCAD Policy Board on November 5th or 4th, whenever their meeting is?
I think it might be November 16th. It's later in the month.
It's later in the month.
Yes, it's going to the board, and I've already.
And then does it come to the City Council after that?
The agreement for the repayment that we did last time was between the City of Champaign and Urbana. And I think we would do the same thing for this modification.
And we should, we should be clear, stretching payments out is another word for borrowing, basically. I mean, I.
Well, you could call it refinancing, if you want.
It's, it's borrowing, so.
Right, but we, you could look at it from the standpoint of, we shouldn't be putting huge amounts of money into a system that can't work, which is the current financing system. We can't keep it up. So, you know, maybe there won't be unanimous joy in the Urbana City Council, but I was pretty happy.
So, it sounds to me as though people are gonna wanna actually look at a spreadsheet or a table and discuss it again, but anyway, I think that's, unless there's more comment, that'll do it for now. The, okay, and having, and, aha. Staff report, Mr. Gray. Ah, yes, thank you.
Good evening. Correctional, Father Assistant City Engineer. I thought I'd give you an update on a lot of our key public works projects that we have around town, particularly the Windsor Road project, with, which there's been a lot of interest in as of late. When you drive through that project, it looks like it's finished. And I will tell you, I'm standing here today, it's not finished. We have a little bit of a ways to go. Right now, the paving is complete. The underground work at the traffic signals at Windsor and Race is pretty much done. The above-ground work will be taking place in the next week or so. The underground work, the foundation work for the pedestrian warning system at Vine and Windsor, which is near Meadowbrook, is finished. The above-ground work is yet to be done. The Windsor and Philo, there is a video detection system that has to go in. The contractor's working on that. We have done some inspection of the concrete pavement, and we have found an unusually high amount of cracking. So as a result of that, we are working with the contractor to come up with a remediation plan. And our hope is that we would still get the road open this year, but it's likely to roll over into the spring. And at that point in time, we may have to reclose lanes and do some remediation to get this, basically, this road up to speed. We are under contract with the contractor. We have not accepted the project. But I wanted to come to tell you folks firsthand what we're seeing as city staff. You know, before I move on to the other projects, do you have any questions?
Mr. Smith.
Yeah, the, is the cracking on the new stuff, or the newest stuff, or the, the already opened pavement?
It's both.
Oh, really? So it's cracking where it hasn't even been used?
Yes, we have retained jointly with the contractor, the services of a local pavement expert, Applied Research Associates. And they are doing analysis to determine exactly what the cause of the cracking is.
Yes, Mike.
Can you give us some kind of estimate about, over what percentage of the rebuilt roadway cracking is occurring?
I think it's still too early to tell. I mean, we've walked it, but I will tell you that with the, what we're seeing, Mr. Madigan, is with the, the thermal changes and temperature, that we are getting cracking, additional cracks on a bi-weekly basis.
So it's?
It's not yet finished through, so it's likely that we will go through the winter period and there will be additional cracks.
Right.
These pavements are designed to shift. And for some reason or another, the pavement's locked up. It doesn't shift. It doesn't, it's, it's basically a jointed pavement system, and it's designed to open and close at the joints. And for some reason or another, it's not happening. And so we're get, we, we noticed the cracking, and we've been observing it. We saw some last year. There's, it's not unusual to have a, a little bit of cracking in a concrete, I mean, concrete cracks. But we are seeing an unusual high amount of cracking.
Ultimately, so I guess it, it, it might determine, it might be, have to be determined by more, by the experts, but is there a possibility that the liability would lie, would the liability be the city's at all?
I think that what we need to do first is analyze the problem, determine the cause. And once we know the cause, then that can help with determining responsibility. I would say at this point, it's city staff's opinion that the contractor still has the roadway.
Is there any scenario under which the city would be liable?
That, that's a good question, and I'm.
I think we're too early in the process to answer that question.
Well, I would hope, since the road has not been turned over to the city, that the contract would be tight enough that there would not be any liability on the city's part. We've already been down the road, so to speak. Uh, once with this stretch of concrete. So hopefully the contract is tight enough that we don't end up holding the bag again.
So, you know, I think the process now is to determine why, and then we go from there. The good thing is, we have had, city staff has had a meeting with the contractor. They are at the table with us right now.
And the better thing is that this is happening now, as opposed to 10 years from now.
Or a year, a year or two.
Even now, the warranty, right.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, Aaron.
So when you say retain the services of a, of a specialist to do the analysis, that's a cost, is that, were we splitting that cost?
Currently, at this time, yes, we are splitting that cost. And the reason is, when you, it was a staff decision, when we weigh out, we're keeping the contractor at the table versus sometimes in these situations, contractors can walk, and then you have to invoke the bond, and that can get quite costly. So the services that were retained are in the thousands of dollars here to make sure that we can discern what the cause is. So that was a city staff decision to keep the contractor at the table by finding a common ground as far as the analysis and, and to determine the result there. City staff does not have the expertise to determine that. The contractor does not have the expertise to determine that. We don't know why. We have, we're fairly fortunate, we have a, a, a local engineering consultant that is a, basically a national expert, that's in Champaign, right in, you know, our next door. And what they did was, they went out and they're looking and trying to basically go through the decision trees to determine why this thing's happening. One of the things that they do is magnetic scanning of the joints. There's steel in there, and they're trying to discern if the steel was properly placed. That's what's going on right now.
Okay. Diane.
This contractor, we've used this contractor before.
Yeah, this is a common contractor for the region.
And they've had experience with these joints before?
They, they are a very experienced contractor, yes. And they have told us they have not had other projects where this has happened.
So, this is gonna be devastating news to the businesses in South Urbana, who've been waiting anxiously for this month to happen and the road open. So what, what, what is the scenario? Will one, one half of the road stay open through the winter, or?
Ma'am, I think it's still just too early to tell. I think we have to let, right now, you know, we're still in the gather, the data gathering phase. And then I think we, we work this out as far as what is the remediation plan. We've, we've, we've stressed to the contractor that we would like to have the road open for the winter time. And then it would likely close back down. But we're not sure if it would be, if there could be some remediation done now. It's just the problem is, I mean, it, it looks like nice weather. It's gonna turn at any moment into bad weather. We don't really wanna get caught in that. We would like to have it open, but it's just too certain. But I, I think, you know, we've had a lot of interest. I get daily emails, I get calls. I've been out on the job walking, and I've been, they roll down their windows and they yell at me, and they don't wanna know why. And I understand their frustration. But I also understand that it's not, if this hadn't happened, the cracking hadn't happened, I think we would be in good shape to open the road and be, and be finished with the project, despite the fact that we had May that we lost with the sanitary sewer line that collapsed, and June and July with excessive amount of rains. So I think we're just at the point now where we're fact-finding, and we wanted to come to you folks first, before this was discussed elsewhere. So, all, all I can say from the city staff standpoint is that we are on top of this, and we, it's, we have a contract with the contractor. We have a partnership with the Illinois Department of Transportation, who is a partner in this, too. So it's just something we're gonna have to work through. And we are gonna ask for the patience of everybody involved to get, make this road what it should be, what we're paying for, so that we can get the road that we want, okay?
Any other questions or comments, other than deep sighs? Yes. Mayor Pressing.
Do, do you think that maybe the fact that there was a lot of rain first could have affected this? Because it was wetter than it would normally have been, when they started?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thanks.
No. I think it, no, I don't, that's not what they're looking at, at this point. So, I guess, go ahead.
Do you have any idea when you'll be back with your analysis, when the analysis will be done?
Well, we're, I mean, we just met today, and, and city staff went out and actually GPS'd the cracks and the joints, and I don't know, I would hope in a week or so, we would know a little bit more. So, on, on the brighter side, maybe we talk about Broadway Avenue. So Broadway Avenue is, is, you know, that, that's a completion day contract where the construction work has to be completed by this Friday. Of course, rain's, you know, imminent this week, but they finished up the paving today on the, on the concrete pavement. There's still some sidewalk work yet to be done, but it's looking like that's on schedule to be finished out and opened up next week. So that's good. And then, late last week, we finished up the concrete patching job up on Bradley Avenue and Bezlin and Goodwin, so we've got that. That turned out fine, that was quick. I know, perhaps a little painful, but three weeks, the contractor got in and got out. And then the next step would be, right now, we're, staff over the winter will develop the bike lane plan for Bradley. I went to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission and sought guidance on how they would like to see the bike lanes put in. It's likely to be two-vehicle lanes with a buffer on the outside, and then bike lanes adjacent to the curb. And then that would be installed next year.
Yeah, Aaron.
Just any of your thoughts and comments on the project for Broadway? The, the multipurpose lane, bike lane and walking path, all that type of stuff? Just, just some comments from you on how that's going?
It's, it's going really well. I think that's a really good example of an excellent partnership with the Park District, quite frankly, because the city didn't have the money to do that. If we would've not done that partnership, we would've just kept and repaired a few of the broken panels. But, no, it's, it's going really well. And if you've had a chance to walk around through there, it's really interesting, because it is serpentine, and it kinda meanders around the trees, and it, you know, I'm not an architect, but visually, it looks interesting to me.
And the street itself?
We, we are not seeing, if you're asking, are we seeing the same? No, we're not. It's the same type of pavement design, but we're not seeing the issues up there that we are in Windsor. And it's a different contractor, too.
And it's very nice on a bike. So, Bill?
I just wanted to thank you for, or thank the, the Broadway construction crew for being real cooperative and helping locate parking for some people with mobility issues that live there, and they were real cooperative in helping to designate a spot for them. That was, that was really a big help.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, and any other staff reports? So it looks as though Ms. Tyler is bringing us some good news, I hope.
Yes, I do have good news. And I think I've mentioned this to some of you. We found out last week that the Highland Green project, which is the project we've been working on for several years on Kerr Avenue, did receive its loancomb housing tax credit funding from IEDA in this round. So it's been about four years seeking funding, about 10 years in the planning, and, you know, since we acquired the property. So they did make it this round. It's great news, means the project will, will be a go. There were 13 developments throughout the state of Illinois that received the tax credits, and Highland Green received 522,000 and change in the, in their allocation. And I know they're, they're seeking other funding, including home funding from our consortium. Also, good news, and I, I, hopefully it won't be raining too bad. Tomorrow's our final food truck rally. food truck rally, tomorrow, Tuesday, October twenty-seventh. Since it's Halloween week, we're going to brand this food truck rally as Truck or Treat. If you're caught wearing a costume, and please keep it family friendly, you'll be entered into a drawing for a chance to win a pair of tickets to an upcoming home Illini football game. Food trucks will gather in downtown Urbana from eleven AM to two PM on the west side of the Urbana Civic Center. Questions?
Okay, thank you. And, any further, uh, staff report? And I assume that Charlie asked for additions to the agenda, so now it's time to approve minutes of the last, previous meeting, from October twelfth.
Motion to approve?
Uh, any discussion? Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. And now, we have ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one zero dash one zero six. Ordinance amending Schedule J of Section twenty-three dash one eighty-three of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Filo Road, from Public Works.
Uh, thank you. The Traffic Commission recently discussed this item, is recommending approval of the attached ordinance. What's going on here is, due to the success of a local restaurant at the northwest corner of Washington and Filo, there's been a lot of parking across the street on a shoulder, and the shoulder has a certain width, and then it narrows down, where vehicles are parking either on the northbound through lane, to stay on pavement, or they're off the edge of the shoulder into the grass, dirt, mud area, whatever the case may be. So what we're doing is, we're widening slightly the shoulder, to make a full car width at the north end, to establish, uh, permanent parking across the way, and then better defining the no parking areas based on visibility and shoulder width, um, as you go further north. So, we're maintaining the number of parking spaces across the street, 'cause that's something that this restaurant relies on, and we're better controlling than the limits of where parking is permitted, and then where parking is not permitted. So, a little bit of Public Works' work in establishing a wider, better shoulder for parking on pavements off, on the shoulder, and then establishing no parking.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Marlin?
No, I was ready to move, I did.
Okay.
Next question.
Okay, well, we can, uh, we can move, uh...
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, and then, okay, so moved and seconded, and now, I think Ms. Marlin wants to discuss?
No, I just wanted to move.
Or query? Oh, you wanted to move, but, oh, Charlie had a question, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. So, I appreciate staff, uh, making this work. Uh, the business is quite successful, and quite good, I might add. It, uh, the, the one question I have is, I know we have a, a roundabout design, and I know we're pushing the, you know, we're increasing the parking distance, no parking distance a little bit, so how does the, how does this affect that potential design? Or does it have any interaction?
If we're talking about a roundabout, uh, design, it would be a total rebuild of the intersection, so this would not even be part of that equation, if you will, so. Um, and that's, I can't even see that happening in the next five to ten years, anyway, so let's provide the parking in the near term while we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was just hoping we'd find some money from that.
If there's some federal funding, Craig and I would find it, and try to apply for those dollars, but I'm not aware of any such, uh, situation.
There was something that came to my attention, I, yeah, we could bring it to you, yeah.
Yeah, good information to have.
Yeah, but, so would, I know we have a design for the roundabout.
Sure.
Does it, does it go as far as where this new parking will be? That was my question, essentially.
We can look at that and see. I, I mean, again, that's such a major reconstruction, that we would, um, actually, if I remember right, we could even cause more parking if we sold some excess right of way to the restaurants, because things shift. So there could be more off-street parking than on-street parking, if I remember right. But, I, I think, you know, we would, in any case, wanna try to make the person, the business whole as best we could.
Question here? Yes, Dennis?
Uh, and Bill, what will the additional shoulder width, um, is that, is that gonna be like a paved area for parking along?
Yes, yeah, asphalt paved shoulder.
So we're gonna get them off the, off the grass, and onto some kind of...
Some areas where the shoulder tapered, okay, at the north end, we're gonna widen that out, square it off, so that the vehicles aren't part on the shoulder, part on the dirt or grass.
Great. And there's really not a, a sighting problem along that, that part of the direction. It's a very gradual curve, so there's plenty of parking ability on that road, at that location.
Correct, but we still need to keep cars at a hundred and four feet off the center line.
Yes, right.
But, yes, it, it will be an improved situation.
Great, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second. I guess the motion is to move to council with a recommendation for approval, is that correct? Uh, and if there's no further discussion, uh, would all those in favor, please signify by voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, eyes have it. Next item is ordinance number twenty fifteen dash one zero dash one zero seven. Ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section three four one, and Chapter fourteen, Section fourteen point seven, fourteen dash seven, Regarding Schedule of Fees Subsection of Liquor Licenses Establishing Class MB Microbrewery Liquor License and Fee from Unity Development.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I need to recuse myself from this very exciting project that may be overtaxed.
Well, thank you for, uh, recusing yourself, for coming to take on this.
I will try to represent your interest, Mr. Madigan.
Okay, I'll try to keep this brief, hold on. Uh, so last, uh, so this past September, as you're probably aware, a definition in the zoning ordinance was created for microbrewery, in terms of definition and use provisions, describing a facility for brewing beer that produces five thousand barrels per year. Microbrewery may include a tasting room and retail space to sell beer and related products to patrons on site. In accordance with that, this is a ordinance to the city code for creation of a liquor license, for facilities that want to manufacture alcohol, but also serve it on the premise. The original, uh, as you received in your packets last week, the original ordinance called for creation of a class MB license with, which, uh, allowed the permission of manufacturing beer, ale, or wine, or other fruit or malt-based alcoholic beverages on the premise, in quantities that were no more than fifteen thousand gal, fifteen thousand barrels per year, or, um, originally said four hundred and seventy-two thousand, but, uh, was adjusted to four hundred and sixty-five thousand, based on a, a different industry standard for the measure of how many gallons to barrels, in, in a barrel of beer. It also granted the right to, uh, sell their products to distributors. It granted them the ability to, uh, set, to, uh, sell their product outright as well, and store or inventory their product, as well as sell goods or products, uh, other than alcoholic beverages, uh, on the premise. A couple, uh, things worth pointing out, there was an inclusion of fruit or other malt-based alcoholic beverages, uh, and wine as well, items that were, that are fermented from fruits, as opposed to malt or, uh, traditional ingredients in beer, to allow any establishment to create, uh, hard cider, or other, or hard, uh, ginger beer, which is not based from all, other, other products that might not be based from traditional ingredients in beer. That deals with a totally separate licensing procedure for the state and federal approvals for that, but, and at least allows it at the local level. So there's that. With the establishment of an M, of a class MB license, originally, that figure was established at two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. We have revised that to five hundred dollars. The original memorandum issued last week was somewhat vague and unclear about a key requirement in the ordinance, and that would be that the class MB licenses created to grant a facility, uh, an establishment, or a business, the right to, uh, make, make their own beer, or their own liquor, but, in order to be able to serve on the premise for retail sales, or for consumption, they would still be required to seek a traditional license of one of the existing classes, based on what they would want to seek. So, in that, uh, in our conversations with two prospective proprietors, Mr. Riggs, who previously spoke tonight, uh, they expressed concern about the possibility of a license that was priced at two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars, in addition to, uh, what they would already be required to pay through that, uh, you know, be it a class A, or a class B, or a class BB license. And, being that their establishment would not be too much different from a traditional tavern, or restaurant that'd be establishing, they, uh, expressed concern about those costs being more in line with what they would be opening, just, and the fact that they shouldn't be penalized, just because they were making their own alcoholic product. So, given that, uh, and, let me state furthermore that, um, it was based on the advice and the consultation from the city's legal department, that, um, interpretation of state law requires a license for, a separate license for manufacturing of the alcoholic product, and then, uh, another individual license for the ability to offer, uh, offer retail sales and onsite consumption on the same premise. So the basis for this ordinance is designed around that consultation from the city's legal department. So basically, the category of class MB would be five hundred dollars. So, an establishment that wanted to, uh, that wanted to, to sell its product, or serve its product on the premise, would still be required to seek a liquor license as existing under the city's schedule of class A license, which would allow other products, or liquor would be five thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars, a class B license, which would allow them to sell or serve just beer, would be two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven, a class BB would be beer and wine, also two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven, et cetera. So, the price level allowed, the price level for the, the fees, I think, keeps it, um, in place with existing, uh, existing costs for an establishment. And it also keeps it competitive with what other, what Champaign might offer, with what other communities might offer for the cost of, um, opening a microbrewery in the city. So, um, I know that the, I believe that Mr. Riggs is still here, and Mr. Sheen is here as well. Uh, Mr. Sheen is, um, the prospective owner of the establishment in downtown, that, uh, applied for a conditional use permit on two oh eight West Griggs Street, and then, um, Mr. Riggs is representing the facility that'd be opening near the TK Windows site, uh, east, on the east side of town. So, without any question, or, with that, any questions?
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Chris, thank you. Um, so, you just sort of answered my question, is, uh, one of the questions, which is, what does Champaign charge for a microbrew license? Separate from the, I know they have a different liquor license schedule, but I'll get to that question next.
They have a, they have some more, uh, they have some, some restrictions in their ordinance that we did not pursue in drafting it, but what they call a class BW license, uh, which was around, uh, four thousand, uh, about forty-two hundred dollars. I saw another figure, that might've been outdated, that said four thousand fifty dollars, but, uh...
Is that a combination brewery license and serving license, or, yeah, that, that's what that is? Okay.
That's a combined license, yes.
That's a combined license.
It says base annual fee.
Uh-huh. Uh, my question, of course, is why do we even need a microbrewery license to begin with? I mean, if they're, if they're no more impact on city staff than a restaurant that doesn't serve, you know, I, keeping the liquor license separate, you know, if they're, if they're a restaurant, they pay some minimal fee, uh, for public health inspection, and that sort of thing, so why do we need to even charge five hundred dollars? Why wouldn't it be more like a hundred dollars, or whatever it is, that we need to recoup our costs with respect to public health?
That certainly is a consideration for the council. Uh, the, it's just reflecting the, the, a use intensity like any other use, uh, and with a, that gets a special attention, because it involves liquor production.
Yeah, I, I guess I would like to see, if we're gonna do a li, a, a microbrewery license, it should be reflective of the costs, uh, to the city, not just some arbitrary number. Uh, since we're gonna do a separate license for serving, um...
And for retail sales.
Then I think that the, the, the microbrewery license itself should be reflective of our costs, much like we reflect the costs of anything else that we, uh, have a license fee to, you know, rental respect, rental inspection is one price, and it's sort of key to what we need to cover, and, and so on. So I think that five hundred dollar number should be, should be adjusted to, uh, you know, to our costs, and that, I would be supportive of that, but not, not some arbitrary number that's higher.
Okay. Any other, uh...
And, and I guess, you know, I, I always come back to, to the issue is, making sure that our liquor license prices are competitive with, with our neighbors. I mean, I think that, that's an impact, uh, on our businesses, and we need to keep that in mind, and, uh, not get ours too out of whack.
Mayor pressing.
Well, I talked about this this afternoon, and I'm not committed to five hundred dollars, I just wanted, that if we're gonna have a separate license, which apparently is required by state law for the brewing, it should be something nominal, and so that, I picked five hundred dollars, but I have no problem with one hundred dollars. But our liquor licenses have been higher than champagne's. We have adjusted all our fees annually, and champagne has more money than we do, so we've got plenty of liquor licenses, and I think, I don't think we should try to lower, um, the establishment license to what champagne is. I think our financial situation requires us to keep it where it is, but if you wanna lower the five hundred, that's just a minor thing, I have no problem with that. But we're doing it because we do, according to state law, what my understanding of it is, we do need two separate licenses. And I didn't want the brewery license to be lower for like a class A than for any other class A, so I was trying to keep it the same as all the other Urbana class As, or all the Urbana Bs, or, or double Bs. So that was the rationale.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that rationale, and I agree with it. Uh, I just wanna make sure that our, you know, I'm always concerned that our, that some of our license prices, uh, are, are not competitive. But I, 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 it seems like you agree with me that, uh, the, the, the microbrewery license itself, the MB license that's in here, should be set to some fee that is reflective of our true costs.
Well, sure. I don't know what our true cost of doing a license is, but I think five hundred or one hundred is certainly reasonable, but I didn't want it to be set at two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven, so...
I suspect it's something like, what, what the, uh, you know, basically, if they, they need the same kind of public health inspection, or whatever, that it should be, reflect what we would collect from a restaurant.
I, you know, I, we, we did have conversations with our building safety division, and the fire department, about any, uh, any increased costs, and that most of the, for, for just being a business that does, you know, uh, manufacturing of a food or beverage product, that those are, those considerations are accounted for in existing fees and inspections. Just that, you know, because, uh, brewing and liquor have a special attention at state, federal, and local law, that, uh, there is some consideration at a, from a zoning perspective that is given for the establishment of...
Then, then we should just make it reflective of the paperwork costs, you know, twenty-five bucks, fifty bucks, but not much more than that.
Okay. Uh, Diane?
Yeah, I agree, I don't, I think five hundred is too high, but this is a license, it's not a fee, so a license is kind of an arbitrary number, we can pick whatever we want. It doesn't actually reflect costs of anything. So I think a hundred dollars is much more reasonable than five hundred dollars, especially since we don't have business licenses for our restaurants and bars and other businesses. So this is essentially like a business license. Only, it's the only business where we actually are charging money to have a license for, because state law requires, so I, I'm fine with a hundred bucks, and hope it encourages, um, more of these types of businesses in Urbana. I think it's a great addition to, to, um, the east side of town. I think it's a great addition to, to the east side of town.
I think Mr. Simon desires to provide us with counsel.
This is not, in drafting this ordinance, it was not a simple ordinance as far as the license, separate from the fee. Illinois state law, the Illinois Liquor Control Act of 1934 makes absolutely no provision whatsoever for microbreweries. The word "microbrewery" or "brewer" does not appear. What it does provide for is brew pubs and craft brewers. Unfortunately, we were not included in the original discussions with the two proponents of this type of business, so we, legal does not know exactly what they wanna do. But there are two really issues. Every liquor license, as the mayor will tell you, being our local liquor commissioner, every liquor license is circulated through all the departments. Now, if they apply for a microbrewery and some other companion license, i.e. to allow them to serve for consumption on the premises to the public or to sell packaged goods in essence to the public for consumption someplace else, and so they apply with a companion license, obviously, the circulation and the background checks and everything that the city staff does is gonna be the same. However, if they apply for a microbrewery license only, which allows them to manufacture, which is a defined term in the act, their particular product, which allows them also to sell to distributors, sell to other licensees such as packaged goods stores like a Binny's or a restaurant or a bar, somebody else who has a license, that's still under the, what we are calling a microbrewery license. If that's what they're going to do, that process of licensing is exactly the same as any other licensee. They fill out an application, they go through a background check, like any other kind of license. If they then apply for a second license, such as the equivalent of a bar or restaurant, if they're gonna serve food, they're gonna have to submit an application. Depending on when they do that, you know, how close to their original application for the microbrewery or how far apart, obviously, the circulation process is going to be simpler. So, again, it depends on how these entities apply for their license based on what they intend to do once they get one or both of these licenses.
Dennis?
And so, as in, so what this comes down to perhaps is that there is an actual cost for looking at and approving the license because there is a process that has to be, that takes staff time.
Yes, it involves almost every, if not every, department in the city. I, I don't recall whether Public Works reviews liquor licenses, but just about every other department does.
So, so maybe, maybe what's fair would be to just reduce it by half and say 250 and that would cover the costs for staff, time and energy and whatever checks have to be done to the...
Whatever fee you set is a matter of policy. There is no legal consideration for that. Obviously, we have bar licenses, but yet they go through the same application process as a microbrewery who might have no interest in, you know, selling at consumer retail.
Seems to me that the right procedure is to move the ordinance and then amend as, as desired. So, does somebody wanna make a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion here. Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll move that, I'll move, well, it's, we normally send it to council all said and done.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, so I think... I'll move this ordinance, but I won't do anything with it until we amend it.
Anybody wanna second that motion?
Second.
Okay.
And now...
I'll move an amendment.
Now, we're open for discussion and amendments.
Okay, I, I'd suggest that we, that we do a combination of, of something Dennis has said and what, what Diana said. I think that if we, if somebody comes in and just wants a standalone license, we find a number that is reflective of staff costs, maybe it's 250. If they come in with a paired license and it's gonna be, you know, streamlined, then it should be some minimal fee. Okay, maybe it's 50 bucks and the, whatever the other license is versus a standalone 250. Does that sort of, is that, is that a reasonable way to approach this? And, and I'll let staff figure out what those two numbers are between now and next week.
Legally, you can approach it in terms of fees any way you want. I mean, if you're asking me for a kind of conceptual view, that seems, you know, a, depending on how they apply, but we have two people here and they might be able to tell you at least what their thought process is and what they want to include within their business, which would dictate their, the type of license or licenses they will need and how they would approach that.
Well, but, but, oh, okay, I shouldn't comment. Yes, somebody else, or Charlie, can you take the chair for a second?
Yeah, I'll take the chair.
So, so I think that the, the intent of what Charlie is, is saying isn't reflective of the, I mean, I think we know the business model that people are wanting to use. I think the question is, what is the, Charlie's raising is, can we estimate staff time required to process the license for that kind of, of business?
Right, that's right.
I can't, I can't estimate costs, but maybe Elizabeth can.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say we could use the time between now and next week to check with Jolinda Ross, who does a lot of the processing and, and, you know, try to pin down those costs and get the input from the folks who are here.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. If somebody will deal detail for the finance department, what are all the tasks involved? How much time do they take and who performs those tasks? It's not difficult to come up with that cost.
Okay. I, I do suggest that we don't spend more time than the licenses are actually worth estimating what we should charge for the licenses.
So, anyway, yeah, so I would move that we direct staff to do a two-tiered approach here with and without, you know, a real, an actual license to vend and, and get some numbers filled in. But I, I didn't hear a second to that amendment.
So, I'll second that.
Okay. So, so the amendment is really a, the amendment is not really an actual amendment to the first motion, but it's a procedural, it's a, this is a procedural resolution for how we should proceed on this. So, I, I'm interpreting it that way. So, any further discussion on that? Those in favor of that procedure, would you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, and so now we have the, the, now we do have a motion on the floor to consider this ordinance at the next city council meeting.
So, I'd like to quickly get a little feedback from, from the two applicants. Does that two-tiered approach make sense to you? Where, where you're just getting a license plus a little charge here for the, for the license, for the brewery license versus if you just wanna go be a producer alone? Does that make sense? You're agreeing?
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
And we will try not to profit at your expense, only to recover costs. Okay, so, so we still do have a motion to consider the ordinance at, at council meeting, so, any, those who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ayes have it. Great. So, the next item on the agenda is, I gotta get my agenda back, sorry about that. Annual budget, okay. Budget amendment. And they, can you, okay, Ms. Hannah?
This is really just a housekeeping budget amendment. There are relatively few changes. We are amending the budget to rebudget some equipment expenses in the police department. Those were included in the, a budget for the fiscal year that ended June 30, but the purchases were not made by the end of the fiscal year. And we're also recognizing receipt of a grant to the fire department from Illinois American Water Corporation and the related expenditures for $800. We're revising the arms budget for police records management to reflect the final budget approved by the policy board. And also, as you know, we were delayed in making payments to property owners in Barringer Commons, and so, as a result, we made no payments last year, but we'll do that twice in this fiscal year. So, we're revising the budget to recognize that.
Yes, Diane?
I move that we send ordinance number 2015-10-108 to council with a recommendation for approval.
A second. Further discussion? Yes, Erin?
So, I don't know if I understand exactly, maybe I'm missing something, but, so there was, in the police rebudget, there was a, there was $51,000 that should have been spent last year that was not spent or something like that?
Yeah, there, there were several items budgeted in the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, and just because of timing of the purchases, the money wasn't spent before June 30. They still need to make those purchases, so we're gonna include that in this year's budget now.
Okay. Okay, further discussion? Yes, Mike?
So, so regarding the Barringer rebates, so two payments will be made this fiscal year, what's the timing of those, of the first payment?
Well, no, actually, they were made, the first set of payments was made as soon as council approved the new agreement regarding the rebates. I think that was August, I wanna say, and so then we'll pick up the regular schedule in May and we'll make the normal payments.
I thought that was the case, but I was just confused by your comments there about, but this is just memorializing this in the budget, that there are two payments this year?
Right, we actually, only when we prepared the budget, we thought we would make payments last year in May and this year in May. So, this year's budget only includes enough to make one set of payments, but we need to make two.
Okay, so, under the authority you already had, you made the first payment and now...
Right.
We're upping the authority so the second payment can occur on...
So, in May, we can make the second payment, right?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Okay. Now, finally, ordinance number 2015-10-109, an ordinance amending Chapter 15, Miscellaneous Offenses and Provisions, Article 4, offenses affecting public health, safety and decency, Division 3, nuisances, Section 15-80, aggravated public nuisances, and I think Mr. Simon is up.
As you all know, in 2010, the city adopted an aggravated public nuisance ordinance with the goal of reducing at least certain crimes enumerated in the ordinance within the city of Urbana. That ordinance was amended in 2011. A couple of the crimes identified in that ordinance include sexual violence and domestic violence. Recently, the governor signed into law a statute which amends the Illinois municipal code which prohibits local governments from either adopting ordinances or enforcing existing ordinances in connection with contacts, a defined term within the amendment, to police departments and/or emergency services to respond to calls for aggravated, or, excuse me, for sexual violence or domestic violence, or calls to assist people with disabilities in connection with their disabilities. Essentially, the statute is intended to prevent a municipality or, for that matter, a landlord from, well, municipality from punishing a landlord or a tenant or prohibiting a landlord from punishing a tenant for making calls to his or her or its apartment complex in connection with these three types of situations, the two crimes and the assistance for disability. For example, if there is repeated domestic violence within a unit or on the property and a spouse makes contact with or calls to the city police department or emergency services, we cannot ask a landlord pursuant to our aggravated public nuisance ordinance to ask that the tenant be evicted. And there are, we have never enforced our ordinance as it currently exists that way. All, despite the length of what looks like a lot of amendments, all the change provides is we've removed from the existing ordinance any reference to sexual violence or sexual abuse. We don't have a disability section in the ordinance. And then we basically add the language of the statute at the tail end to make sure we are compliant. We were aware of this statute before we received a letter from the Shriver Center and the ACLU regarding our particular ordinance. They feel it was not in compliant with the new statute and, to a certain degree, they were right, to another degree, they were wrong. Their, their concern and the statute talks in terms of contacts. Our ordinance would have only gone into effect if we used it in that way in terms of proving up in a civil context that these acts had occurred. But in any event, it was legal's decision in consultation with the police department to go ahead and amend our ordinance as recommended. Now, all the other amendments, except striking some language and then adding the addition at the end, is merely to make accommodation for sections that have been deleted or added. So, there are, you know, paragraph, section, subsection numbers that had to be renumbered. And that's frankly why it looks like a long amendment, but it isn't. Strictly to accommodate the statute, frankly, we have no opportunity really to not amend the ordinance. We are required to do so.
Yes, Erin?
So, within the, the ordinance, I see other language being changed outside of just the, those related to domestic violence, sexual assault or things like that. So, why would we be making changes to other language if we're only addressing the aspects that needed to be added? For instance, on page five, it looks like it says, for instance, there's an underlying section I that says "two or more forcible felonies, with the exception of state or federal criminal sexual offenses or criminal or crimes of sexual violence," and we strike some language.
And that's essentially to accommodate, to accommodate the statutory, state statutory prohibition for penalizing anybody for making calls to police departments or emergency services in connection with sexual violence or domestic violence. We want those calls to be made. We don't want tenants or guests of tenants to feel constrained from making those calls because they're afraid that they or somebody might be evicted or somehow penalized or at least not renewed because of, you know, a number of calls, one or more calls, in this case, two or more calls.
No, I absolutely understand and agree that we're trying to protect people from domestic violence and assaults and things like that. I guess I'm just curious as to what, I don't understand how, what does two or more forcible felonies have to do with that? I don't understand what that has to do with anything.
The two or more forcible felonies are what is currently in our ordinance.
Right. So, I'm, I don't understand what that has to do, who, who...
If, if there are calls, let's say there are two or more calls for firing a firearm...
Okay.
...in an apartment.
Mm-hmm.
That, even though we haven't invoked it that way, that can be a basis for invoking the aggravated public nuisance ordinance, i.e. to deal with eliminating that kind of a crime or a battery unrelated to domestic violence or sexual violence.
Okay, that, that's clear, okay.
And then obviously, number two relates to... And then obviously, number two relates to, you know, sexual offenses, so we struck that. If you go on to, I think it's page seven, a, another provision in the ordinance, again, all of these changes are to accommodate the prohibition on certain types of acts that the new statute contains. And then, of course, at the end, we essentially, where it says "protection," starting on page 10, that's a recitation of the statute. As my able assistant, city attorney, and I would say that's a belt and suspenders approach. We have discussed this with the folks at Schreiber, and frankly, they were exceedingly pleased with the fact that we've taken such a quick and hard proactive stance in implementing the new statute with our ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Manion?
So, I guess to put this a much simpler way, this ordinance makes our city, our city law compliant with the state mandate.
Correct.
And nothing more.
Nothing more.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
So, I think I'm gonna make an, a motion to accept ordinance 2015-10-109 that amends Chapter 15, miscellaneous offenses and provisions, Article 4, offenses affecting public health, safety, and decency, Division 3, nuisances, Section 15-80, aggravated public nuisances, with recommendation for approval to city council.
Second.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, will all those in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting stands adjourned.